We'll call to order the committee, the whole meeting at five thirty-two. And first up, anything for the good of the order tonight?
Sure. I'm speaking with a friend Saturday night and she drives me to Palm Springs Valley with her little bus thing. And part of her job, she has to interface with the federal metro and what's the other one? Yeah, and one of the things she said is their their way of figuring out where services are needed is you have to comment on routes. There's no way to comment on non-existent routes. So she's, she likes to know if we're, if in part the conference has a plan to address transit. And if there's anything we've had about transit that she could look at for research to approach the two entities about getting more services.
Is that something you want to address now or just follow up later?
We can certainly answer the question. I think probably fairly quickly.
At the very beginning, I heard the last part, whether our plan will have information on the bus service within the bounds specifically to the law. There's a way to comment.
And how does it help?
So we always have general laws and policies of transit, whether it's metro, SBT or anything else. If they want to see some part of the typical policy, then they should probably, we'll make contact. I just need to.
Okay, I'm going to give you my shot, and we'll get, we're actually working on it.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, review of regular meeting agendas, or anything, this is mostly if there's something on the agenda that would lead to polling, or if you had some quick questions, or just to get us ahead of you, had anything in your concern. Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, there was some questions about the subject in just part that I think there are a little bit. So I'm not going to answer that. I just think we should pull it off and say, give it, give it some description.
Is there a say council good if that gets pulled, or I'm assuming you saw the reply as well?
Yeah. Just let me show. I'm here for that portion of the meeting, so is it okay if I just come? Yeah. So I know the information was submitted to us. I just did want to note from council that this has been in the budget since 2018 and it came under the request. So because that is both for a lot of persons of the year, we eat during the rainy. And so it's actually not only increases usability and the number of objects that we use. It also helps protect the equipment better. So you know, it's not just about essentially day-to-day, but that's what happens and you can't get a project done just to do not happen. But it is, has been a strong community request for this.
Let's recheck, council wants to pull this on Shaker, send us a discussion on it? With that.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, it was, the mayor was commenting, she won't be here later, so.
Sure.
I had a question.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm.
Okay, and then I had a question. What do you have on your mind? Was the Big Rock Bay to expansion of that one? I just had a question about it. Okay, yeah, oh yeah, okay. I'm just curious, do you have additional property around it? There have been comments with an original design that things were pretty stretched and it was pretty close to the fields and there wasn't a lot of room. And looking at additional property, really even if the property and construction features, you can have a property on that. So I was just curious if part of this design would take into account maximizing the purchased property to see if we could create, you know, a design that both aesthetically and maybe functionally better. So I, I just, I wasn't sure. I thought I'd be a question for the line of state. If that's part of what maybe they consider.
That's fine, we can turn to Director.
We need to go to people first. Yes, so we need to process like one of those in there, we haven't pulled the home base in pieces. So it is with a number of assuming maybe we didn't pull them a piece or two. So it was in there, but yes, the integration of final access. If you come out on the piece we own, type access and if I didn't do left preferred there, then it would be a move to go east a little bit. So with that said, we will be looking at different access. Once we have all particles in PM and no one opposed to expanding parking and our access. And you can only have fifteen percent of development on a concrete property. So that's quite a bit. We're still looking at units and new purchases to the northeast of the Baton. So we're kind of having to phase it out before expanding to account.
Okay. One thing, I put parking really close to the baseline. And so when I go to park, often those remain empty because no one wants to get there. Right? And so, you know, to maximize where we put the parking so that it's actually usable, that people are willing to park there. You'd hate to have imperious expense and expense of creating parking spots that you don't want to get in.
Yeah, well, we're looking at it this way, it's the one putting spots somewhere important.
Right. Maybe, okay, great, thanks.
I hope we did. Okay, anything else on the regular meeting agenda review? All right, so with that, we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is the mayor or message on the twenty-five, twenty-six financial budget.
Good evening, everyone. Today I present to you the city's Duval mayor's proposed financial budget for the years twenty-five to twenty-six. As has been the theme for the past several budget cycles, we continue to see changes, growth and challenges in our community. Whether it is the increase in housing development, changes in revenue, adjusted for the rapidly increasing cost of doing business, unfunded mandates and more, we are experiencing rapid change in our community. For many years, we have discussed the forthcoming discipline for local governments in Washington State caused by the arbitrary one percent problems increase. After being spared thanks to revenue for new construction, baseline increases due to population growth and the stabilizing effect of federal funding to support the city during and recovery after COVID, we are quickly reaching the edge. Despite these challenges, we have found opportunities to maintain most services. The proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six seeks to maintain funding for essential services, continue investments in our staffing and infrastructure and plan for the revenue forecast of the future. This mayor's proposed budget also prioritizes to the greatest extent possible the things that make Duval such a great place to live and work, like community events, the arts and parks. A recent workload analysis conducted for the city of Duval identified some critical gaps in staff. These gaps are indicative of inefficiencies and ultimately cause taxpayers more in the lungs due to the nature of the required work and risk involved if not properly staffed. This is despite gradually increasing staff levels since 2018. In 2017, the city had fewer staff than it did in 2018 after layoffs due to the Great Recession. Yet the miles of infrastructure to maintain and number of residents to serve within Duval has increased dramatically. Consequently, we saw the impact on overworked staff, loss of grant fund eligibility due to mandated policy updates not being completed, and many more outcomes of not maintaining the appropriate boundaries between staffing levels and the work needed to run the city of Duval. We have worked diligently to gradually rectify the situation and have been largely successful in our efforts. The budget continues to make adjustments in staffing to ensure that the city is able to carry out all its legal obligations as well as to provide essential health, life and safety services, services. The completion of a workload analysis and a municipal financial plan provide the tools necessary to make important policy regulations and decisions that will help stabilize the city budget and make it more resilient to fluctuations in the global economy. My hope is that with these tools, the city is able to continue its pathway forward as a full-service and highly livable city through strategic investments and revenue generation. The proposed budget is balanced. This is both a requirement under a specific plot and a commitment to our community by the city. While balanced, due to some items mentioned previously, this budget is the most challenging we've managed in nearly a decade. To maintain service levels and move critical items forward, we are using a combination of any fund balance, contingency fund dollars, funding for the city council approved appropriated strategic plan. It's important to note that this budget continues to maintain and protect our reserve funds, which is critical for weathering unexpected financial storms. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget is very likely the last financial budget to maintain service levels without additional or new resources available. Without significant increases in revenue to offset the increased cost of doing business, along with providing growth programs and services, staffing will need to be cut in the 2027, 2028. The city's general fund is the least restricted revenue source comprised of primarily sales counts and the city portion of property tax. It is also the most balanced. Public safety is a hundred percent funded with general fund dollars. It is consistently identified as one of the community's top priorities. The place of parking alone comprises more than forty percent of the overall city budget. While the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget maintains staffing and programs and funds the highest needs for safety equipment for the police department, we are not able to fully fund needed investments, including additional staffing and other equipment replacement. Adding to the challenge, the existing property tax limit expires in 2025, meaning that the city council will need to determine how to replace those fines to support public safety, specifically the funding for school resources early in the 2025, 2026. It is expected that city council will have to take up potential revenue deliberations as early as January 2025. In addition, virtually all parts maintenance and operations, as well as most services provided by staff at City Hall are also funded by the general fund, making them at significant risk of cuts without increased revenue in the future. Due to the tightness of the general fund revenue forecast, we are not able to find all positions recommended by the workload analysis study. This includes the inability to fund positions in support of the city administrator, information technology and human resources. We are combining the responsibilities of code enforcement with safety and emergency management and unfortunately eliminating the communications coordinator role. While we have proposed a promotion perks maintenance for weekend coverage, converting the community events coordinator from a limited term employee to a full-time equivalent and adding a finance manager to shore up our finance department. If additional revenue is not identified, these key positions may not be sustainable in future years. Despite these challenges, we have maintained focus on maintaining our infrastructure, developing policies that make decision-making easier and more transparent, hiring qualified employees when positions are vacated or new positions filled, and working diligently to first carry out statutory work while carving out areas to support the non-essential needs and wants of the community that enhance our quality of life. This includes maintaining funding for human service grants and supporting the annual summer stage concert series, as well as other special events and the important work of the cultural commission who is responsible for promoting the perks in the city of Duval. Traditionally, the city of Duval budget is conservative, which over the past several years has resulted in continually increasing fund balance as revenue came in higher than expected and the city continuously addressed such. Standards implemented by administration in 2018 have provided guardrails around the fund balance by not allocating the funds as part of the budget and require initial council approval before your use. This has allowed the city to grow the unbudgeted fund balance as well as being nimble with unexpected expenses. These efforts have been a stopgap. While administration and council have prioritized professional analysis of the city's financial health, remission and financial plan, workload analysis and capital facilities analysis, figuring a holistic picture of current and future city needs, along with developing the pathway towards resilience. One major challenge to achieving financial resilience remains to be the arbitrary one percent cap on the city portion of property tax. This has become compounded with high inflation rates, increased cost of labor, rise in commodity prices for prices for commodities and construction. While revenue continued to increase over the past seven years, costs have risen and it appears much higher than property tax and sales putting continuous pressure on the city to continue to afford to maintain. For the new twenty-five, twenty-six financial, we expect sales tax to grow slower from six point four percent in 2004 to three point three percent in 2025 and three point one percent in 2026. This is despite significant new population growth within our community. In addition to increased costs for construction and services, recently negotiated labor agreements, employee medical insurance coverage costs increases up to seventy-nine percent this year and a twenty-one percent increase in the cost of city insurance continue to drag challenges to our budget. This budget assumes a one percent property tax increase for both 2025 and 2026. And with the city's property tax declaring just eleven point three percent of their total property tax bill. Due to the same property tax formulas, the proposed increase combined with new construction will actually result in revenue rates decreasing by three point one percent. To adapt to the continuously changing city financial landscape, there are many valuable budget requests that we're not able to be fulfilled and significant reductions. Projects not funded include $250,000 for a format park master plan, consulting services for code revisions, including short-term rentals and landscape policy updates, reducing the budget for special mailings and surveys and harbor services, as well as elimination of training requests. In good news, the city's enterprise funds remain healthy and strong. As a result of policies approved over the past twenty years, our water and sewer funds remain stable with strong reserves that will allow the city to absorb most unexpected expenses or equipment failures. Over the past several years, we've been planning catch on overdue policies, maintenance of facilities and achieving adequate staffing levels. We are now seeing the fruits of these efforts as evidenced by the completion of police department and public works building renovations and moving forward the contract for site selection and design for new city facilities. These efforts are also evident in the work to complete the city's comprehensive plan update, parks, transit and space plan update, municipal financial plan, capital facilities plan and workload analysis plan. This catch-up would not have been possible without the increase in staff that we've achieved over the past several years and can only be maintained by continued efforts to prioritize essential. Paired with the future administration and city council making difficult decisions to increase future revenue. The addition of a contract lobbyist will assist the city with obtaining both grants and direct appropriations from state and federal government to ensure that we built city facilities will last well into the future, provide operational efficiency and provide space for our community. We look forward to sharing all the details of this budget with council and working cleverly to refine the budget and shape the city's work for the next two years. As your mayor, I am enormously proud of the work that has gone into producing the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. There's a lot to celebrate in this budget for continuing to support the arts community and community events, expanding our city parks and park infrastructure and supporting the amazing staff and talented staff that come to work every day and supporting the residents and businesses of Duval. And optimistic that even with the challenges presented against us, the city of Duval will continue to be financially resilient and strong.
Did you, I can't remember if we usually take questions. So we'll go ahead and move on to, we have some more presentations. We have presentations from the recipients of the 2024 Human Services Grants. And first up from Hope Link, we have Amanda Lopez Castaneda.
Hi.
How can I introduce you, buddy, if you'd like to?
Hi, everybody. My name is Amanda Lopez Castaneda and I'm the director of food programs at Hope Link. Hope Link provides support for people living in New York and East King County. Hope Link serves clients in need, refined centers in Redmond, Kirkland, Bellevue, Carnation and Shoreline. By offering services in nine programs like energy to people who may need help with utility deals, housing for those who need a shelter and transportation, for those who may need a ride to their doctor's appointments, Hope Link's goal is to meet the mission of offering supports that lifts people out of poverty and into a life that is self-sustaining. Food, a basic need, is usually a client's first point of entry into our services. For Duval residents facing food insecurity, having access to food that is healthy, fulfilling and culturally relevant is an important first step on the road to sustainable independence. The stress and trauma associated with not having food at all or enough food is relieved by our free food service and Duval residents have the energy, stamina, hope and desire to not only live but fulfill their dreams of a life of independence. By all shoppers, Duval residents can access our food markets two times a month. The most likely market to serve Duval clients is the one located in Redmond. I say most likely because once enrolled, shoppers can choose the location based on where they might be on the date they need us. From January first through October eighth, twenty twenty-four, two hundred and fifty-eight Duval residents visited our Hope Link market to shop for food in a grocery store model shopping, shopping experience. Hope Link provided a total of forty-nine thousand fifty meals, partly in part by the nine thousand dollars awarded to us by the city of Duval. This equates to nine thousand of the meals being covered by the city of Duval's funding. The food Duval residents receive is that meal product. Demographic data shows that so far in 2024, forty-nine percent of shoppers identified as Hispanic Latinx and ninety-four percent identified as being very low income. Your support has been vital to our services and provides an important, much-needed resource to the residents of Duval who need us both to continue to support them in partnership. Thank you very much for your partnership, your continued funding and support for our mission and all the smiles and thanks we receive from the wonderful residents in the community of Duval who visit Hope Link's markets.
Thank you very much. Next up from Encari Network, we have Felina.
Folks. I'm Natalie.
Yeah.
That's a team in wonderful, and if you would like to see Natalie, I encourage you to come and visit our office. Any? Max Harris on the executive director of Encari. So Encari Network, our mission to promote and inspire our youth to lead safe, healthy, successful lives. We do this through seven core programs. We've got suicide prevention, substance use prevention, youth success mentoring, halfway to employment success, weekend power packs, trace care team and youth engagement. These programs cover the entire South Palm Valley, but we have a strong concentration up here, over here in Duval. So some statistics that really stuck out to me is from our 2023, 2024 school year. Our weekend power pack program, which provides food for our youth and teens over the weekend, we were able to put four thousand of those together. So the gift from Duval and support. Major contributor to this one. We also had just over a thousand one-on-one mentoring sessions, which is incredible. In addition to all of those, we also have just our campaigns, our awarenesses, we're in the high school, you know, we're in the community talking all about suicide prevention, substance use prevention, really just how to make good decisions when it comes to hard things to have decisions about. And moving along. Our trace care team is one of the great resources that actually we had leaned into as we all experienced this last tragedy, which was a couple of weeks ago. So this team is our coordination team, so parents, youth can call in and we're able to direct to the appropriate resources that will help you in whatever you're navigating. Again, mental health is our main focus, but it's one of those, we have so many great partners that we're kind of a catch-all. I know there's been times I've answered the phone with nothing to do with us, but you get to just be a human and have a conversation and direct somebody to the right place. To a wonderful opportunity. So in addition to that, we also have a few parent education days and nights, as well as summer reading, which is a great, these are all multi-renewal. So we want to provide as many opportunities as possible for people to experience the greats. Move it on, I know if I get a time limit check too. Some of our programs and initiatives that we're seeing in the communities, we've got all of our general events that recognize all of the great volunteers in the community, as well as events that bring together key leaders, opinion leaders, as well as our leaders in the community to talk about hard subjects that are geared in the schools, as well as nationally, as well as just in the community, our last one being the cell phones everywhere, primarily in the schools. Nice way of saying we keep going through. So. We're in the school, we're doing stuff, we're getting the words out. It's a constant evolution of figuring out how to stay ahead, how to connect, how to be there for learners of all type, community members of all type. And again, we're all here together. And that is the very short download of Encari Network. Thank you so much.
Very much. Last for our Human Services Grant presentations from Encapus, we have Neela.
Here I am. Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Neela Castaneda. I'm the executive director at Encapus. And I want to thank the city of Duval for the generous multi-year support that we received and for giving me an opportunity to present tonight. Next slide. So Encapus is nearly sixty years old. We've served South Palm Valley that long and specifically provide services that support young children and families of young children aged birth to age eight. Our purpose is to ensure the well-being of young children and our vision is a community where all children grow. Next slide. So we serve a pretty large service area, about one hundred square miles, primarily the preschool districts of Isipal, South Palm Valley and of course, River View School District. In 2023, we serve twenty-four hundred, over twenty-four hundred individuals, so that's children and their parents. So we serve a child and they have two parents, that's three individuals. And ninety-five children in Duval, children only, not including parents. So ninety-five kids getting a direct service and of course, the parents. We are able to serve so many children because we have a lot of community-based programs. In for Duval kiddos, we serve them through a number of programs and community home-based programs and our preschool that's at Carnation Elementary, and I'll tell you more about that in a day. Next slide. So we have two main service areas at Encapus, pediatric therapy, which are for children who have a diagnosis. And we generally build inference for those children. There's just a variety of therapies like speech, mental health therapy, occupational therapy, and our birth to three early intervention program, early support for infants and toddlers, ESIP. We love African, actually, the state of. And those children receive therapy in home. We have a number of children who receive therapy in home in Duval. Next slide. We also have our early learning. Oh, it's, I didn't know it did that. Okay. Our early learning and parent support, you know, kind of bucket. And those, these are programs for children of all abilities. Most of it is focused on school readiness because our kids are so young. Early childhood is the best opportunity to make positive impacts. Ninety percent of brain development happens birth to age six. So we're really taking advantage of that. The funding we receive from Duval supports our ECAP preschool. ECAP stands for Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program. And that's a preschool specifically state, mostly state-funded, but Duval is helping us, but state doesn't cover the full cost who are living in poverty or have a developmental disability. The classroom is at Carnation Elementary and seventy percent of the kids at that program are Duval residents. Let's show you a two-minute video. I promise it's two minutes. With a link, and that will show you we support.
I'm Sarah Phillips. I'm the lead teacher in our foundation preschool program. I started out as my whole kid, uh, going to preschool when I was four. Out at our kindergarten high school, went into the ECE, the Early Childhood Education field. Uh, and on my way back to my place. So ECAP stands for Early Childhood Education Assistance Program. So it's a program funded by Washington State. It just allows children to come to school and they get provided for them every day, as well as health screening throughout the year. Um, and we also have a family support part of it, so families outside of school can get help. And it's free. In bilingual classrooms, most of our students, um, learn English, Spanish. Um, so in the classroom, there's a lot of Jewish language learning and Spanish language learning.
My name is Alejandro, but they know me as Alex. We'll see the kids after they're here, after they come out of their shell and then after they English and Spanish. Well, you're reading in English now, you're reading in Spanish too, like really cool to see that be put together.
There's a little bit more about ECAP in the next. Yeah. So those are all the things included with ECAP. And there is a parent support or family support component for families who need resources. There's quite a few of them do, so your family support specialist who works.
Five words. You pronounce.
Anyway, um, so I just want to, uh, just thank you for the opportunity to share a little tiny bit about Encumpass with you. Um, your support, human services, um, at Encumpass is really, really appreciated. Um, we have a funding gap with our preschool program, um, for ECAP. So it is a state-funded. The one thing I don't love about that video is when Sarah says, and it's free. It's not free. It's free to the families. Um, and it is Monday through Friday, nine to four. Our program really helps families, um, but it is not free. Um, and so after the state, um, contracts with us for the service, our funding gap and early learning around our preschool programs is hundred and seven thousand dollars. So we got the fundraise. So, um, we fundraise it from everywhere. We can't just have a game on the Saturday. Um, you know, we're invited, um, and, uh, we'll just continue to do that. But we really appreciate our city, um, support that does make a difference and allows us to help the city. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll start our presentations from recipients of the twenty twenty-four economic development. Uh, first up, we have you from Duval Days, Morgan.
Hello, everybody. This is Morgan Henry. I'm the executive producer of Duval Days and the president of the board. Um, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint I was looking for and together, but unfortunately, we had, we had to put one of our goats down recently. So I like this been. Excited. So, but, um, first of all, I want to thank the City of Duval for always being amazing. Support in Duval Days, uh, chief, your officers and you, you guys, you did an amazing job again this year helping us put on the events. Public Works is an incredible public works to work with as well. Um, I worked for all the cities in the valley, putting on these festivals and town events. And I guess Duval was at the top of being, uh, being, uh, community-minded and easy to work with and, you know, doing above and beyond what we were asked to do. Um, as far as the monies that we received from the economic grant, that helped out a lot this year. We were, uh, able to pay our sound crew. Just to do all days, the main stage on Saturday, there were also the sound crew to the ref room, which is also on main station on the corner park. Um, we also used some money to pay our opening act on Saturday evening. And then we did something new this year where we had some live music down in, uh, Depot Park to try to bring some attention to fans and people to the artist code, which I believe was successful. And we learned a lot from that, and it is something that we want to carry on here in the future, Duval Days. So basically, this, this grant allowed us to add more music to the event, which in my opinion, more music, more better. And it also freed up some money in other places too. Like, uh, an example would be we got to pay sort of the acts that were playing on the community stage, and those acts usually did play for free. So they were very, uh, very happy and receptive to receiving money for the time. So that's very important as well. This year's Duval Days, we, I do want to say we, we set some records. So we had more than ever by far. We also had more sponsorship money coming in than ever as well. So the future of Duval Days, I believe, is looking very bright. Um, we've already had multiple meetings discussing two thousand twenty-five. So we're already got the gears turning and we're brainstorming and coming up with new ideas and trying to further the success that we built on this path here. So definitely that wouldn't have been able, that wouldn't have been achievable without the City of Duval and the council and the public works and the police department and everybody else that played a role in, uh, our historic community event. So, I love you all, given the, thank you for everything you did.
Thank you very much. Next up, we'll have from the Duval Farmers Market, Alex Yerow.
Hello. We have a presentation. Uh, yes, I'm Alex Yerow, I joined Duval Farmers Market in twenty twenty-three season to assist with the marketing, uh, social media marketing and whatnot, and then, um, moved up to president for this year, for this season. Um, so I have a short presentation to go over the grant and how we use it. So this year during our twenty-three week season, we had forty-two vendors, sixteen nonprofits and eighteen musicians. And we chose to focus the grant on the musical experience, both for, um, musicians themselves and people coming from our. Next slide. So we had, you know, a handful of challenges related to our musical experience for musicians and for our attendees. One being down at the park, we kind of have a unreliable insufficient power supply. It's unreliable in that, um, our vendors' needs change often last minute and we break peak power capacity before. Um, so when that happens, um, you know, either the musician or a vendor might have to go without for a portion. Uh, we had insufficient, uncomfortable seating, inadequate shelter for the musicians and limited sound quality, and it was artist-dependent. So, um, in addition to that, we also wanted to focus on some of the marketing related to the music as well to both attract, uh, local musicians and promote them. So with the grant, um, again, the purpose was to enhance the market's infrastructure to provide and elevate the school experience for both musicians and attendees. So there's sort of three categories with the grant that help us to deepen that musician canopy. Um, we doubled it in size is what has been previously used, which, um, some of the bands have more than five people, so that keeps them all covered and a piece of brain and lets them spread out a little bit. We also were able to get a portable P A system. In the past, the market, we have, um, any sound equipment of our own. So people were bringing in their own systems and the low noise generator for that insufficient power supply. Uh, we also used the grant for our musician honorariums. So in the twenty twenty-two season, musicians were paid just thirty dollars for coming to play for three hours. And, um, you know, it's more of a token of my appreciation, but not, not quite enough for gas. So in twenty twenty-three, we have upped it to a hundred dollars. And then, uh, this season, we were able to use the grant for that. And, um, because of that, we were able to attract more musicians. And the twenty twenty-three season, we had about ten or eleven musicians who often repeated throughout the season. Uh, this season we had eighteen and we could have had a different musician for each date, but you know, there was some point that it set the calendar. So we had a few increased applications, which is great. Uh, we also purchased additional chairs for both audience seating and musicians. Uh, at the Duval Farmers Market, we do a free nonprofit booth that, uh, is in demand each week. We have one nonprofit there. And so between our nonprofits, so we provide chairs too, and the chairs we need and the chairs the musician needs, there wasn't really enough for an audience seating. But if you come to the market, you'll often see people sitting and listening to music for, um, upwards of an hour, if not longer. Some people come each week just for the music. So now we have, um, some additional seating that, uh, we don't have to borrow from nonprofits for, and that is more comfortable. We also use the grant to both print and hang the banners you hopefully saw through town. So the banners were hung, uh, the opening season and the closing season, and then during the season at our market. And then, uh, yeah, we believe all of this really, it's going to make the music, music experience better for years to come. You know, the banners will continue to be used, the chairs will continue to be used. Um, a lot of this investment is going to help us for years to come. And last slide, I don't know if I was supposed to say questions or not, but sounds like no. But we also were featured in the Snoqualmie Valley record and they didn't mention the grant as well, so I want to.
Thank you very much. Next up from Duval Foundation for the Arts, we have Tony Chuler.
Hello, everybody. Tony Chuler from Duval Foundation for the Arts, actually the treasurer of Duval Foundation for the Arts. Um, and also the, uh, co-chair of Sand Blast this year, the chair of yours previously. Um, and so I've talked much about Festival of the Arts, uh, which where our grant funding went towards. Uh, this year was a transition year since, um, I'm moving off of running the festival itself. Um, and generally passes and but moved it on to a new lead. Um, it was our twenty-ninth year, which means that next year is a real special one for us. Um, one thing that, uh, has been a challenge with funding for Sand Blast over the years, it's been the writing blocks of things like wrinkles. Especially in the past, we were able to get chairs on loan from the art department and they or have it available, so we have to rent all of their chairs and a lot of the tents that we use to cover people, um, at the festival. And then, uh, additionally, uh, the, uh, sound person that did me a solid for several years. You know, I knew that would only last for a little while and we'd have to pay somebody to do the sound engineering for us. So these things have kind of made the cost of Sand Blast go up every year. And our goal is really to, uh, spend as much of our money to the artists as we can during that time and not as much on most of the things surrounding. Um, so this year we were able to, uh, get a new street banner, which was amazing. Thanks to you guys. Um, that's something that in the past we'd had, um, before I joined. And I'm not exactly sure what happened to it. I think it got eaten down by like the county or something at some point there. It had disappeared and we've been wanting to give them back. Uh, and we got quoted price for it and, um, so so we were able to get new banners and, and, um, get our street banner hung there and, um, very even able to put your logo on it because, uh, you were a big supporter of ours there. Um, we were able to pay our sound guy this year, um, who did us a real solid, um, by really cutting this rate down, um, in an in-kind manner. Uh, so we were expecting to pay a lot more there. Um, we have lots and lots of local bands this year, um, that were also paying more than we historically have. We're trying to raise what we pay off the thing over to the artists that, um, participate in Sand Lab. Um, and one thing that I'm really proud of this year, we, we very much tried to keep it as local as possible. Um, and the tricky part with that has always been, you know, who carves sand around? We've always had to import a sand carver over the years, but, uh, this year we were able to have a sand carver local to the valley for the first time and since I moved here at least, um. So it was really a thrill to have that. Um, it also meant that, you know, we had some unexpected things, but we didn't have to put her up at Chateau Palmer since she lived here. But, uh, she did a beautiful job. I don't know if you got down and saw, saw the art, but, uh, it was really amazing. Um, and everybody that comes through is always really amazed by kind of the centerpiece of this festival, which is the sand carving. A lot of people, when they first hear about this, they go, where do you even have this? Like, we have a beach, like, you know. Uh, so, uh, those were, those are all the things that were really exciting for us and we're really excited for next year. We're just getting started talking about our thirtieth anniversary, um, which will be this next year. So I hope we can bring a little more of that excitement and maybe grow the festival, um, with how successful it's been over the last couple of years. Um, but just really wanted to thank you guys for your support. Uh, on a personal note, one of the first things I did when I moved to Duval is I joined the cultural commission and I was on the, maybe events granting committee, um, that gave out these grants back then. And it's something that I've always wanted to see the city get back to supporting all of these amazing festivals that I think are like the true heartbeat of this town. Um, and so I'm really glad to see you supporting not just us, but all these people back here uh, that just make, make it so cool to live here. Um, and I hope you will continue to do so in your good time. Thank you very much.
And then from the Duval Music Crawl, again, we have Morgan Henry.
Come back. Okay, Duval Music Crawl. Again, I was gonna have a PowerPoint for you, but I already said what I didn't. So, um, for an inaugural event this year, I feel like it was full of successes. We had a meeting, um, a month or so ago with a few council members and city employees, and we discussed, uh, pros and cons of what we, uh, needed out of the nine weeks of the music crawl this year. We were able, we had, what, let's see here, thirty-six musicians. About a third of those were local to the community. All the venues that were involved, I've talked to all of them since, uh, the music crawl ended and they were all very excited and happy to be a part of this. And some were more of a su- success than others. The Grange and the Duval Tavern, those, um, every Saturday there was slammed. Uh, but all of the venues did express their gratitude towards the city for taking that cost off of their plate for having live music. Some of the things that we would probably do, uh, differently is we would not do nine weeks. That was a bit too much. Um, probably break it down to six, five, six weeks, something like that. I would definitely change around the schedule as well. Um, maybe add another venue, mess around with the timeframe a little bit. But myself personally, I learned a lot from this year about what can be done better for our successes. And, uh, comments were for this year, but I was, uh, kind of love to mirror what Tony just said. My deepest thanks to this chamber, to all the city employees that believed in this event and funded it. Um, I definitely know that if we were to do this next year, probably wouldn't be solely funded by the city. So I am already looking for other sponsoring to be a part of it to keep this going, because I do think that this could be a very big value to the city and our community and kind of what Tony said, carrying on that tradition of arts and cultural, culture and live music that has, is very much, I believe, as well, the heartbeat of this community, Duval and the whole Snoqualmie Valley. Um, I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in the decades that created kind of that field here in this community. And I would love nothing more than to see that continue into the future. love nothing more than to see that continue into the future, especially as our community rapidly changes with more and more people coming here and kind of our uh society and the way changing as well, we definitely don't want to lose that cultural and arts aspect of our communities, very important. And I think the music crawl can play a big part in that. Um, I had a lot of people come up to me during the crawl, after the crawl and tell me how much they loved it, loved the opportunity to come down and see live music throughout the day and you know, especially to be able to bring their kids, because it's being an all ages event, that's a big deal. Sharing live music and arts with uh with our youth is, I'm sure, empower youth and accomplish what a group actually does, can be part of development. Um, but yeah, in closing, again, I want to thank the City of Duvall, the staff, and the arena for believing in the event and helping me put it together and Rick being the forefront, the forerunner and giving it all, organizing with the city and I definitely look forward to future conversations, see how we can make it even better in the summers to come. So again, thank you all for believing in live music, the arts, our community.
Thank you very much. And our last presentation from March of the Vegetables is Sheila Beardred.
Hi, um I just want to confirm that everybody can hear me right via Zoom.
Yes.
And I just want to thank you for for the invitation to be here tonight and also for being able to attend via Zoom. And also a huge thanks for your generous support through your economic grant money for our Farm Forest Fish Festival that we offered in September. With this support, we were able to offer the festival to the public for free to ensure a diverse, equitable and inclusive event in partnership with other organizations, including King County Snoqualmie Watershed Forum, Snoqualmie Valley Preservation Alliance, Snoqualmie Tribe, the Salmon Stewards with Seattle Parks and Recreation, Duval Historical Society, Duval Writers, and Duval Civic Club, uh Nature Vision, a nonprofit organization that offered environmental education, and Mosaic Montessori, and numerous local artists that we were all able to compensate with the generous support of the grant fund. Um, the booths, we held booths located along the river trail between Tableau Landing and the Depot Depot Park. And they offered a range of science, music, storytelling, and art activities, connecting people from the community and beyond to this beautiful valley, the Snoqualmie Valley, and the natural resources we all depend on. This was the second year we were able to offer this festival and despite rainy weather, unfortunately, the event was very well attended. And from the extensive feedback we received, people enjoyed the event and really appreciated the range of activities. And I would also echo what other speakers have said, how much we appreciate the support from the city of these art activities and ways to just connect connect the community through creativity. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So that was the last of our presentations, uh written reports, and I just want to know, there were several uh human services directors sitting on who did not make it tonight, they did submit original reports they'll be on that list on the agenda, you can click on and leave those and um other items there. For at six twenty-five, um you wanna take on the city administrator report?
Good evening, uh council, mayor, members of our community, I want to, from uh the city staff perspective, thank you all for attending and giving presentations to council tonight. Um it's it's the work that makes my job really rewarding to see these events and the grants to our community. We do thank you all. Uh, so for tonight, our first presentation within the city administrators' uh update will be for community development.
We can see here, we're still here. Uh, our first child development plan, this project is starting to wind down and come through a phase. And I think our first city nonprofit hearing, our, I mean, our public mission. We are scheduled for a couple of group December, I think, for last year. Our transportation side element is coming along, we've done first review of the we now have a goal and policies under first review, I think Steve and I heard the last two did, that would be done this week. We are also reviewing the land use element, it is underway as we speak as well. We have the goals and policies for the county commission also last month. And now we have the full element for review. We received the introduction to our last week, and so that first review is also underway. Uh, we're coming into the closing booths, the cap facilities plan, you probably saw an email come out, uh we issued a determination, so we're hoping to go to our public hearing in late December or early January at the latest. Uh, for mid-year for twenty twenty-four, we issued eight new single family slash home thing permits. Uh, we issued a total of thirty-two permits this month. Uh, residential permits issued to date are thirty-nine, permits waiting for pickup are thirty-nine. So thirty-nine is still pretty big, where we expect all of those to be picked up by the end of the year. Permits under review are about thirty-five inspections per month are two hundred and seventy. Our total permits issued today are just under four fifty. Our full inspection to date through this year are three thousand. That's another good news, we still have to get our position after about eight months. Uh, they will begin work the second week of November.
Any questions for the Director Thomas? Okay, we will move on to the public works update, the Director Lashawn Steve.
Good evening, Mayor Council, uh, people in Duvall Works. And we put it kind of hard for putting you guys in front of us, I'm almost telling you. Uh, on your screen there, we actually hosted in this building. So I just want for all public staff to go over uh winter safety operations and equipment, stood up in here, and then they went down and then got into the trucks and most of them are outfitted, uh they have taken much work to prepare for the winter, some of the older units are still uh standard, so we've only hold that five fifty, the de-icing truck, so it was on an order for a quarter ton, so they are very uh, there's a lot of wing wiring and we had one person on staff who can do that. So yeah, that's all up and running. Went over everything from the routes to protocols, vehicles themselves, response planning, et cetera.
Will we have the Bumble snowplow decal?
Need to pause, put it on, or it's setting on, yes. Uh, not quite on, because it's going to be twelve. So, but yeah, the graphic is here. Uh, but we do have uh limits there on what we have equipment wise. And this week, we, we being Luke and Joe, our operations manager, will be going to the King County Recomy. Uh, it's called that, the PCC, or anything. They go over from expectations of winter disease, uh, carbon levels there, and then of course, the Noah forecasters are there and then operations, I heard from us, the larger county agencies, Rose, Metro, et cetera, those are fun meetings to hear what's coming and what the expectations are, it's supposed to be uh water colder, so. There you go. Everybody getting prepared. Next slide. Uh, we got here, so general public works, some uh updates for you, not noted on here, but since we got a couple of questions early on. Um, Big Rock Parks, we have a service contract with filter, they they do a little, we we maintain and remember it, et cetera, uh we have their service come in. And we'll contract, they come in quarterly, give us a report, uh the report is our fields are in great condition, they were put in service in twenty seventeen, so they could be nearing a latter part of the non-revision, but I'm only meaning on its way to agreeing to four, uh we're not going that way yet, so that's all good news. Uh, we didn't name the technically three spaces, the two parks, so the Rio is the park is one park, and then the park that's inside the brother, those are public parks. So the Rio did say area park with the one forty-third is Snowberry Park. And then we uh park off of two twenty-first, which is over those areas. Two Moons Park and it's just north and they will be addressed for access and service purposes, so working on signage plans, well uh Main Street, weather pending, that's Thursday or Friday for concrete work downtown. Uh, we have closed the RFP, we hit up for the site selection services contract, that's coming to the meeting in November. Um, interviewing, uh kind of work with makers, architectural things, I is a final, this question to the path, is the women own, and that was great, and we're excited for that. Very boots on the ground and folks and and help the city, see what they have and see where we we should be. Getting the RFQ ready to go off, the advanced metering and infrastructure work, which is on the interview. Overlay. See the grant award, we were awarded four hundred fifteen thousand five hundred ten, that has been up to four hundred and fifty thousand two seventy-four, we have a gaining order, uh gaining order is what, ten, is ten, ten, or at nine? And then then we're able to turn that request into PDA, even cover thirty-four thousand, sorry, four grand more than their, but you for the thirty-four months. That's three days, you know, against nine hundred and fifty, another month left. Uh, one more thing in place, that was paved today, they'll finish up the concrete work beginning with the pending this week. Uh, that will be open to vehicular travel tomorrow. Hopefully get some temporary take down for lanes, uh next slide. Couple of quick shots of the paving there from today, uh that is bottom left, that is the east end looking west. And same to the middle one, and then the top one is closer to looking at two seventy-five, all of it. Uh, next slide. Play button there is a time out video. You see the paving machine waiting for asphalt, getting asphalt moving forwards. Asphalt goes in, lifts, there's only four tenths of inch you can place that once per one thousand city, not that standards, so there's a couple of tears. So they fill the edges and then get the first lip down and then uh they file it. Uh, next slide. And again, we know that. Uh, third ever cover, that is a window travelers, it is flagged for access control, because they are working on their concrete work. The railing, which is to the left end, uh perimeter of the project over the, you know, the fall area. Uh, that will be made after, so we're gonna pour concrete, there'll be temporary wood um railing systems put in place. And once the concrete is cured and poured, they will measure for exactness and then they have to allocate all of that. Don't think months, we'll give the railing up, uh concrete down, seal the project up, basically suspend it for winter and then they'll come back. Spring. Uh, city hall concrete windows out, so they will start December one, we thought they might start this week, but there's going to be quality materials to uh do that work. December, we're working on closing out the remodels um for the table there. Two point two three was our final contract. Um, change orders allow five percent, we're at one hundred eleven thousand, the contents, we've got one fifty, we're at one twenty-three, so all in all under uh the bid number in the contract. The number was two point three two, but there were some discrepancies in the calculation, so it was certainly closer to the two point two three, that was um final number. Uh, still all on on good uh path to move forward. Uh, next slide, a little bit of additional news. So Conservation Futures had a request for additional funding and or change to your contract, so we put in an additional request for five hundred and six thousand, so four seventy-six for land and thirty thousand for incidental type clean and prep. We were awarded that this week, uh so our original one point four oh three million is now one point nine mil. So that will also our resource needs are a little small there. Still working on closing out the two contracted parcels and hopefully we'll go through um next week and then Thanksgiving week for final purchase. And then one more slide with the public works, I think we're gonna jump into sending.
Yeah, I saw that someone was, and maybe someone responded actually already, but a question about when the sidewalk will open.
Yeah, all that is, but they're kind of more confident.
So that would be, it would be open as soon as that.
As soon as the railing is available, whether the concrete, right, it's gotta go in, couple of it's secure. They just go over out, it'll take a little longer, it doesn't get hard and scuffed, uh but yeah, once the sidewalk is in and the railing is out of I'm not sure.
But even that's not very well.
Yes, with a temporary. We've got it. Okay, next slide here is, we have thirty hundred budget for weight finding signage repair. Um, and we were looking at one or two of these, these are the three worst ones, the top one is Valley, the middle one Stevens, and the lower corner along the left is at the trail, right, that people park. So I had it quoted to service all those, the this slide right now, the green needs to get powder coated and then the lanes need to be built. So it is just under ten dollars, the nine hundred. Uh, the thing I just put it bring forward, we have an economy going, uh we can do, you know, one at thirty-five, or all three, and then the two big ones on the north and south end of town, and two close full span ones are in great shape, and those have been referred recently, so these three are laying uh quite quick substantially and oh, there is one more on Stella, it said two liter for additional parking and it's, I didn't have service quotes, so I can always add that, I don't expect it from me. All that much, but I put a wrap.
Thank you, only quick question on this one was, I I thought, I I thought we were like redoing them completely, or was the plan changed, or has it always been a Um, so, or what is it imagined and ruled over for two successive budgets, has been to just refurbish these, and so this was three thousand. Um, there are, there's additional money for parks signage, which is a separate line for signing that individual parks. Um, but this has been the amount for wayfinding and um, you know, it's been rolled over now for multiple years, so three thousand probably, you know, maybe four years ago might have gotten this, then it's not. Thank you.
Yeah, cool.
Um, I was curious, the new access to the trail at Duvall Village, um I had received some feedback from someone that they didn't even know that existed or that it or a lot of there, and um so I don't know if that's something on Main Street, if we can have a feature even on a existing pool, so even wayfinding, but maybe it wouldn't need to be, well, I don't know if that's even a possibility or.
Um, yeah, so uh, Dr. Lashawn Steve and I talked quite a bit about um naming the parks at Rio's and So and Toll Brothers, but one of the things we also like to highlight is that we haven't gained the access from Duvall Village to the um to the trail, nor have we publicized it on our website name, and when you look at uh the other entry points, Snoqualmie Valley and actually the mountain, something we're getting, that shows the access points to Duvall for the trail, um so one of the things we want to do is name that access point, so we can advertise it and get it to people that advertise the same type of process as well as so I think we came up with a really creative of Duvall Village, Palm Trail, access point or something.
For trail access. It'll, it'll get the signage consistent with the parks system programs.
Did you have a follow-up for a separate question?
It's the same question, but follow-up, um so where I was thinking it would be neat to have one, it's on Main Street, that people would know, so not, because I know there's a small time, right, with him, but more of a wayfinding on Main Street.
I'm not considering it, if we looked at signage along the highway is a little different correctly, since it's not immediately off, but yeah, it's a tough spot. Because there's A pretty wide open space when you're looking at the intersection, so we have to figure something out of.
And was there another hand, did you?
Quick question for for Steve, uh the uh. The economic development money you talked about, is that of course, you know, it's no different.
Because there is a a whole line of economic development activities you put budgeted. And this is this was part of that thirty seven hundred, so we're asking that you look at it and look at it.
Yeah, this was one of the line items. But again, slightly underfunded, the money that council budgeted for economic development activity covered the grants. The flower pop program, a couple of other activities, but one of them was large banner pulls on. Uh Big Rock Ball Field, which we did not move forward to because they were fairly strategic. Um and in terms of expense, so there's money remaining in that fund if council would like to proceed with adding more to wayfinding. White wayfinding signs in this budget.
Look, does that money appear in the budget somewhere? Are they some mon- money?
Yes, we did not in this budget hold over what is left. And so that's part of, I think, the council deliberations for the twenty five and twenty six. So the money remains um right now, we haven't paid out all the grant recipients because they haven't gotten all the resources. So we're still needing to screw up that fund and the expected fair amount will come out of the twenty four line item. Um but we did not take what was left and roll over into twenty five and twenty six. So right now, the only items that are in the economic development fund in twenty five and twenty six is the Portos Babel Grant. So it'll be up to council to decide which one to do in terms of planning that line item. One of the reasons that we invited folks to present to council tonight is to have the presentation. Early enough in the budget cycle, though, tonight. Um so that either tonight or the interview weeks and before next week or next meeting, you could decide if you wanted to add money into the economic development grant. Our economic development line item. Does that answer your question? Okay, and then we have a final slide, which is some updates from City Hall. So we have videos, we have our first sponsor for light of Dubal. Uh PSC is contributing a group to the event, which will allow us to um light it a little bit, so we're pretty excited about that. Um so this uh just helps um. You know, with sponsoring our events, it's the first step with the coordinator, redeveloping our and. Kind of building out our sponsorship activities for our special events, we're in the midst of creating a new sponsorship guide. If we're going to uh capitalize more broadly than we have and also advertise more opportunities for sponsorship of events in just our stage. So that guy we're expecting to have ready by the end of November. Um once the council um. So it's waiting on council adoption of the budget, so. We're not going to ask for sponsorships unless we know that we're funded for the events um in the twenty five and twenty six project. But we are really excited about opportunities to increase sponsorship activities of our. Uh we have some staffing updates, so as Director Tom said, we have hired an associate planner, it was a really challenging recruitment. Um we had two runs of recruitments of full cycle with five decline offers as we're competing with different cities. Uh so the community development group, um there's a lot of competition for planners and uh. We have a small city. Uh with not the resources of Kirkland and Villiers, it was a bigger city, so we are really excited, we have a planner that's coming, but it took a bit. Um our finance associate, uh our last day was yesterday, we're very excited, Liz Angela, she's been extremely valuable. Employing um the city, I think in a mail to council, I um highlighted the fact that she won the uh employee award. For going above and beyond tiers and real, she's going to a neighboring jurisdiction, really excited for her, but it's a South Osford city. And then our communications coordinator, um his last day is Friday. Um also going to a neighboring jurisdiction. Um on the plus side, we have a new firm desk associate who started, uh his most recent job experience was in administration with the US Department. Uh he had the. Get the opportunity to talk to him, he has amazing stories from his top marketing in the DC area. Uh including he's been to Camp David and he did activities at the um Arlington National Center, so we're really excited. Um at the next meeting, I've invited the deputy director for WCIA, who's our chair. Uh to come give a presentation on the state of liability insurance on that environment, Mark Hinton. And help uh all of us understand the driving forces behind the increases that a lot of cities are seeing. Liability insurance. Uh we have a star gazing event at Big Rock this Friday, seven eleven, whether it's permitting, it's looking cool and white, so. Uh we'll see, but uh that's a really great event, if you haven't been to the start seeing about this, my husband and I went to the last one. And um the person who runs the event is just amazingly patient, we had a group of kids in front of us and. Uh anywhere that they wanted to see that he could point his telescope to, he did. And the kids wanted to know if his telescope was powerful enough to see an astronaut on the moon, they looked. Couldn't find it, but um. Nice event, the families were there, were just really appreciative of having something science and nature based that the city was offering to the community. Um and then finally we finished our IT firewall project, so you know, back in twenty twenty two, this time in twenty twenty two, two years ago. Uh council received a report of a lot of work that needed to be done on our main T infrastructure projects. And um we are coming to a close on many of them, we are in. Probably a two hundred percent better place than we were two years ago, I'm so pretty excited about. Our finals. Thank you, everyone, who participated in trick or treating on Main Street. Um and thank you to the police department who joined me in at city hall and handing out candy. This is just one of, I think she probably least over amazing pictures of young police officers who have. With our police. It was a really nice event, uh we had pretty good weather up until, I think, twenty minutes before, yeah. Uh thank you, everyone, and. Uh council member Shaker.
That's not worth the comment, uh related to the star gazing event, those events are absolutely phenomenal, I have not been to Dubal one, but I've been to others. They're an eye opener for for kids that don't necessarily ever get that experience anywhere else. And can spark long term interest in 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 science, technology. So that I I know at least the city contributed staff, staff everything for the well, well.
Any other questions? Um with that, I wasn't sure, like, hell, are you sticking through the next meeting?
I'm not.
Oh, do you do you have a mayoral uh update that you want to get for?
Will be, Mayor Pritham and I will be attending the National Cities Conference in Tampa next week. Um so first of all, it's going to be very interesting to be. Um in a large city that's been hit twice by serious hurricanes within the last four months of. And you know, it'll be really interesting to see how their recovery efforts are going, uh they do are continuing all their mobile tours. Uh so one of the exciting things too is that this is our third anniversary of the city space, uh and. I think most folks know Association of Washington Cities is a frontline. Um so it'll be a huge celebration, I'm sure lots of history of the organization and. There's a great lineup of classes. And um I'm sure the network thing is going to be absolutely incredible with lots of great ideas for that. So definitely looking forward to spending that time uh down Florida, especially getting to spend some time up shop with Mayor Pritham. Um and our uh all of our fellow.
Alright, so with that, I think we'll go ahead and adjourn the cow at six fifty one. And be back at seven to the committee.
Mayor. Mayor McDaniel Henry. Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Schaper. Mr. Mercer. Your Mr. Sutherland. Miss Daplin. Miss Kupel.
We have a forum. We do have one council absence. The mayor had a family obligation, but our council access. So if there are no objections, we could move and add that to the consent agenda for next. I don't hear any, so we'll look at that as consent. Are there additions and permissions to the agenda? The one I know of is council would like to pull agenda bill twenty four down fifty seven with a jug or make your own sunshine purchase from consent and add it to new business. I don't hear any objections to that. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? All those favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right, the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have some proclamations. Okay, first up, we have Native American Heritage Month. November is designated as National Native American Heritage Month, a time of profound significance when we honor and celebrate the rich cultural heritage histories and traditions of Native American peoples whose roots run deep in the Snohomie River Valley. And whereas this month provides an invaluable opportunity for our community to educate ourselves about the diverse tribes of the region, including Snohomie, Tulalip, and Sioux. Sioux and Pomoish people, and to recognize the significant contributions Native Americans have made to the cultural and historical tapestry of the United States. And whereas long before the arrival of European settlers, Native American communities flourished in this land cultivating vibrant societies and nurturing the natural environment with a deep reverence for the earth, which continues to inform sustainable practices today. And whereas we honor the enduring legacies of remarkable figures such as Crazy Horse Sitting Bull, Sacagawea, and Pocahontas, whose heritage wisdom and resilience inspired generations and remind us of the ongoing journey toward justice and equity. And whereas today approximately forty five million Native Americans reside across the United States embodying a real tapestry of cultures, languages, and traditions that greatly enhance our collective identity and heritage, particularly here in Duval and broader Pacific Northwest. And whereas it is crucial for all residents of Duval to actively engage in learning about the struggles, triumphs, and ongoing contributions of of Native peoples, fostering a deeper understanding, appreciation, and respect for their histories and contemporary challenges. And whereas by acknowledging the past and promoting dialogue and collaboration, we can build bridges of understanding and support the efforts of Native communities in preserving their cultures and advocating for their rights. Now, therefore, in the upper layer, Mayor of the City of Duval, you hereby proclaim November twenty twenty four Native American Heritage Month. In the city of Duval, I urge all residents to participate in local events, educational programs, and initiatives that celebrate the rich heritage of Native Americans and recognize their invaluable contributions to our heritage period. And next up, we have Veterans Day proclamation. Veterans Day is solemnly observed on November eleventh each year, a significant day dedicated to honoring the brave men and women who have valiantly served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas this day serves as a profound reminder of the countless sacrifices made by our veterans who have selflessly dedicated their lives to defending our freedoms and safeguarding the principles upon which our great nation stands. And whereas we recognize the extraordinary courage, unwavering commitment, and remarkable resilience of those who have worn the uniform of our military encompassing the sacrifices of those who served during both times of peace and conflict. And whereas we honor the memory of our fallen heroes who made ultimate sacrifice, giving their lives for the ideals we hold dear, as well as the enduring contribution of the veterans who continue to serve our communities with distinction and honor. And whereas it is our solid responsibility to ensure that veterans and their families receive the unwavering support, deep respect, and recognition they so richly deserve, not only on this day, but throughout the year. And whereas the city of Duval stands united and profound gratitude for the self-observance of our veterans. And we encourage all citizens to take a moment to reflect on their sacrifices and the invaluable contributions they have made to the fabric of our nation. And whereas we invite our community to participate in local ceremonies, events, and acts of kindness that express our appreciation and solidarity with those who have served, fostering a spirit of respect and recognition. Now therefore, Amy O'Farlane, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim November eleventh twenty twenty four Veterans Day. In the city of Duval, I urge all residents to honor the courage and sacrifices of our veterans and to commit ourselves to supporting them and their families every week. And last but not least, we have a proclamation for kindness month. Whereas the city of Duval proudly acknowledges those regardless of age who contribute positively to our community and the world, thereby shaping a better future for all. And whereas the Empower Youth Network Suicide Youth Suicide Prevention Program, a vital initiative in our community which includes the Be Kind, Ask, Speak, YETI makes our schools, communities, and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And whereas any day, week, or month is a good time to remind all of us of the need to remember that compassion, empathy, humility, and respect are essential ingredients in the creation and maintenance of a kind and civilized society. And whereas kindness, a universal trait inherent in all of us, serves as the bridge that transcends the barriers of race, religion, politics, gender, uniting us in a shared humanity. And whereas the profound power of kindness, when recognized, understood, and utilized, has the potential to create a positive ripple effect that can transverse the Snohomie River Valley and beyond. And whereas fostering acts of kindness within our community, we help our residents develop a thoughtful foundation and a respect perspective within themselves and those around them. And whereas through simple acts of kindness, we can promote healthy behaviors and positive dynamics within our community. Therefore, not only improving our lives, but those of others. Now therefore, Amy O'Farlane, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty four kindness month. In the city of Duval and recognize World Kindness Day on November thirteenth each year. Let's be kind to ourselves and each other and build a community based on understanding, compassion, empathy, humility, and a mutual respect. All right. Next up, we have comments from the audience. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allowed to three minutes speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in writing form to expedite subsequent correspondence. And then I think the rest of that I can just leave in there. Do we have? Is this for the public hearing or? Oh, beautiful. Okay. So we have a couple of opportunities for public comments. So I'm going to read off and ask for patience as we clarify who wants to speak when. So Walter Penferriti, would you like to speak during general public comment? Or one of the public hearing?
No, I just signed it.
Okay, great. Katrina Dawn with the Duval Civic Club, would you like to speak during regular public comment? You can approach the podium. It was the civic club, right? Yeah. So then they would have five minutes to speak here.
When I'm speaking down, when you're to represent the civic club and speak in benefit of them. You have a choice on your agenda tonight between two items regarding fireworks. One of these choices is a lose, 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 lose situation, and the other is a win, 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 win situation. And I'd like to talk through those very quickly. You know, it's not often that you have a win-win situation in your role. You guys deal with the tough stuff. Option A is a full fireworks ban. It sounds good when people propose a ban because most people, regardless of where they stand, don't like the fireworks that fly around. They're afraid they're going to catch things on fire, and they don't like to lose. I don't either. So a ban sounds good. However, a full ban has been shown over and over with statistics that I've sent a lot of them to you. But it is a lose, 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 lose. For the people who don't like the loud ones and flying around ones, it's a lose rather than a win to banning because you take away the option of a safer islands from people in the city. So more people, we have tribal land nearby. More people go out there and they not only buy those, they buy the worst ones that are illegal statewide, and they bring them back into the city. And countless studies have shown that when people ban, problems go up. So it's a lose for those people who want the ban. It's a lose for families who just want to celebrate a fun holiday, build memories, and that's with their neighbors. It's a holiday that brings people a lot of joy. And we did that right now, in my, in my opinion. So those people lose because they even have a high to do a celebration or they're law-abiding and they lose that privilege. The kids lose those memories. It's a huge loss for your civic club. Your civic club is one of the role models of how a fireworks site helps their community. What many people don't realize is when you see a neighborhood fireworks site, they're usually supporting a nonprofit group, and your civic club is a museum. There are consecutive scholarships because of the money they get from fireworks stand. They support countless events that Duval has because of the money they get from the fireworks stand. So banning that, that's just going to club off the knees. That's kids that won't get scholarships. Other events support that won't happen. So how is it a win, win, win? Option B is a modified ban. Many people don't realize there's an option B. They think it's all in companies. In a modified ban, the things that people complain about, one flying around the loud ones, that's their goal. So it's a win for those people who don't like them. They're banned. They're not sold in the city. It's a win for the families, the people who want to celebrate because they have access. That's what, is that me? Oh, yeah. Oh, they have access to the ones they're shown not to cause the problems. No noise, no booms. But there's no booms allowed. The city of Auburn says if it goes up or blows up, it's illegal in Auburn. So anytime you see one above your head, you know that was not purchased there. Somebody went and got it illegally. So families can have that fun and that joy and that connectedness in the neighborhood. It's a win for them. It's certainly a win for your civic club. They can continue having the money to reach out and help the people in Duval. And it's a win for those students who get scholarships. And it's a win for the city because you don't have the increasing problems. I brought my notebook up because I just, there was an article that just came across from Albera, India. But the title was, they call them crackers instead of fireworks. Cracker ban goes up in smoke as Delhi reps more fireworks ban. And then you go on to read and they said they have three times the problems. Oregon, Eugene, have the same thing. On the flip side, Tappuilla, CTAP, Kennewitt, Seidro Woolley, Auburn, all have statistics and problems. I've told you, I've grown to love Duval since I've been in this job. I love this city. I don't want to see you twice go down that path because it doesn't bring about the desired result. So I am here to inform you to choose option. Thank you. To choose option B, the modified ban. It meets the needs of everybody. It's a win, win, win for the city of Duval. Your residents have voted with their wallets. They like fireworks. They hibernate them. So I would ask you to choose option B, the modified fireworks stand. It'll be event for everybody. Thank you so much.
And that's we ask.
Stand Duval. I am with the Duval Civic Club. And I'm here to encourage you to not do a full ban, do a modified. The civic club, I don't know if everybody knows, but we took it over from the rotary. And we hit it out of the park for years. And we have, we have last year, I think, our net fundraising was seventeen thousand dollars, which we were able to, we are able to give to more scholarships. More of we support the city with summer stage. We, you know, do that. We oh, I didn't remember. And so I would encourage, we also do the senior center. We support their their affordable housing. Did that was support the Historical Society. I need to keep that moving and digitize everything so that everybody can access to it. So with that said, I don't have a lot, but I think that knowing that the other Katrina has actually sixty nine stands that she's responsible for from the Canadian border down to First County. And Duval was number three in sales out of sixty nine scores. You realize that, you know, we're the only game until you get to Monroe that has about eight stands down there. But everybody else, nobody else itself. So they come here. So they frequent our stores. They frequent Safeway. Safeway loves us to be there. And somebody's always there, usually. And then I make sure that nothing happens and, you know, shouldn't. And so we were very conscious of that. So I would, I do support that one because like I said, there's only two other stands that were ahead of us, which was amazing. That's our little town to be able to support them. And we are going to be getting more scholarships. I think we gave six or seven thousand dollars in senior scholarships last year. And so we plan continuing or upping that. So. It's that setup.
Thank you. Um, there, given your organization, uh, speaking of okay, David Moore, first filled up in space.
Oh, yeah, that's the second.
What was that?
The second.
Um, would you like to give public comment on something other than P T O S? Uh, yeah. Oh, are you here for first fills up in space?
Yes.
We're not there.
Oh, all right.
You're ready to go. Since anyone who is not here for purple open space or devoted, you'd like to give general comments. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So that will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion or consent agenda?
So.
Think it's the move in second. All those in Denver, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. So we took care of the mayor's report and city manager's report during the committee of the whole. Are there any complaints or reports? I know we've had a bit of extra time between meetings, so. No, all right. I don't think I have any either, but I'll pick something after. But um, all right. So that leads us to our presentations. We have Cascadia State of the College with Dr. Eric Current, the president of Cascadia College.
Sorry to, to pass field in open spaces. We have a whole, all three of you have a part. You all give your chance. Thanks for having me back again. We started last week. I'm going to make this an annual presentation. You all give your chance. And uh, thanks for having me back again. Uh, we started last week. I need to make this an annual presentation so that you're aware of what things you're going at Cascadia, which is a community college that serves the municipal share and the city of Duval. And a slight little side story, I actually thought we started at six, so I spent the last hour down at Starbucks. And there was no one else in there. And when I walked in, they said, why are you at restaurant? And I said, well, I'm speaking at council about Cascadia. The young woman high school student who was there is a Cascadia running startup student. The here is a parent of a student whose daughter went running start the first year and then stayed on at Cascadia. Graduated from there and has become subsequently paralegal. And a third uh person, sort of employee, uh her daughter did two years of Cascadia. And so I scored a uh three, three wins right there and was kind of a celebrity spending my coffee per treat, but I. It, it was lovely to know that we serve the city of Duval and that people appreciate what Cascadia is all about. So I'm here to report on where we are today. It's our twenty-fifth anniversary this year. We've probably been around for twenty-five years. Remind you, we're in Bothell, we're co-located with Udo Bothell. And we serve the cities of Kenmore, Bothell, Woodville, Duval, Hurton, Redmond, and Carnish. Uh, three school districts, Riverview, Lake Washington, and Northmore School District. And last year when I was here, it was a little bit darker. Uh, and enrollment had taken a lot of dives over the COVID period to where we lost forty-five percent enrollment. I'm here to report really great news. We are back after our twenty-seventeen enrollment. Things have just skyrocketed. So we're gonna go through some of our uh successes and our challenges and um some places where maybe you can help. So let's go to the next slide. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so we're twenty-five percent above last fall. Why? Uh, there are a lot of different things going on in different areas of our services district. Can the city of Kenmore gives a hundred thousand dollars to tutor uh even more high school students because if you're there during COVID, they lost skills. In traction in math, English. So we've been doing that and those students have been getting extra tutoring and then subsequently in enrollment at Cascadia. We opened up the Redmond Center, which is actually a, a bonus to Duval folks if they go to Petercrest because they can stop at Redmond, which is closer than either Bothell or Bellevue College. Our Redmond Center is full uh with all of our classes there. And we host uh every spring student covered conferences for different high schools. Five high schools for, or five school districts participate. Over eight hundred students come to us every spring district students, so it's like a challenge. That's really a part as well. Next. We are also focusing on retention efforts. So we have a mentoring program where the students from historically marginalized populations have been getting mentoring. They're succeeding better than students who don't get mentoring. We now have something called intrusive advising. We don't wait for students to come to us for advising. We contact every student and they have to go through the technical before they register for the next quarter. And that helps that even a long way. And then we embed tutors in math and English. I mean, we have accelerated students who sit in on a class and then they help tutor the students who are taking that class for a certain time. Those things have helped students stay on with us. Last year, uh after fall quarter, ninety-five percent of our students stayed with us into winter and ninety percent stayed with us into spring. Uh, that is different than we've ever experienced. It's usually one hundred percent in all, eighty-three percent in winter, seventy percent in spring. But we have this huge retention issue. Next, please. And so is it a pandemic rebound? Maybe. Other colleges are also seeing double-digit increases. But we also know that costs and uh is important to people these days, to the economy being what it is. And so you get a better deal when you come to Cascadia. And right now, we're serving over one thousand running startup students. High school students taking college classes simultaneously coming from forty-five to thirty. So we have a better reputation for providing good quality education for running startups. Next. And so what else we have going on? We just opened an eighty million dollar science building. We are about to break ground on a student services hall called Gateway Hall. We started our foundation, jump-started it three years ago. We're bringing in more than five hundred thousand of our community members to turn around into scholarships and help students from where they need. Uh, we've opened up a community advisory committee and uh I think the mayor has been invited to come to that. Um, to just help us understand what's going on with various communities we serve. We continue to have a great relationship with Udo Bothell. Just to remind everyone, if you try to get into the University of Washington as a freshman, it's not a long for a chance. If you go to Cascadia first, ninety-five percent successfully getting into Udo, tap it, you can get to Cascadia first. And then we are also doing something, uh, we teach a course for employees on equity inclusion. And that's become so popular that the King County Library System, different chambers of commerce, different outside agencies, beyond the state of our folks, they can um have good foundations and that is a big success. Next, please. So we do have some challenges. Uh, last year, we didn't have enough enrollment. Now we've got too much and we can't find enough instructors. So if you know anyone who has a master's degree in particular discipline, especially English, we would love to entertain the idea of hiring a class, whether in Bothell, online, or in Redmond. Um, and that's important for us in growing the equity to serve students. We're also trying to just get the right class offerings in Redmond. Uh, my team met at the Lake Washington District today to try to just specialize uh what classes would be good for their running startup suits. And I'll talk about this when I come back next Tuesday to talk to the school board. And uh, we have been given money, donated money for our foundation to help with transportation from home high schools to the Redmond Center. So we'll be offering that again to the Duval District uh so that way they have a group of ten students who just need to get to our classroom, we can provide that. And then staffing, I don't know what to say in all of your businesses or in the city, but we have a lot of people are still looking for that best job, the right pay and the way through their careers. And so our staffing numbers are pretty good. Our faculty are stable. It's the. Uh, other challenges, a supply chain continues to be an issue for us. We need to, this student services building, Gateway Hall, it's supposed to be approved by the legislature. And as of two months ago, well, we were saying vote to get on this year's list because of what we are in rankings. But they are currently pulled back on our capital budget in the state legislature and we may be right because we're going to get the funding this spring or two years from now. If not now, then in two years. And I may be asking um the city council here uh with a draft letter to say, we support our community college. We support the legislature uh making sure that they can include this building in their capital budget for this year, if you are so inclined. That's a letter. No, I'm not getting where February. Hold that over. And then um parking is not really, we have plenty of spaces, but it's getting enough students to drive. We built a thirty million dollar parking garage and we don't have enough people parking it to pay them. More, we do have enough people to pay the mortgage, pay the uh, I'm not saying mortgage, I mean, uh, we took, we borrowed thirty million dollars to go with because we had to. So it, it goes against our sustainability. We want people to take the bus and bike and walk and all these scarves, all these things. But we also need enough cars in the parking garage to. That's a challenge. Thanks, please. So there are ways that potentially, uh, if you'd like, you can help. You can come celebrate twenty-five years with us at our uh event in February. That's a true celebration where you'll hear student stories, understand the history of the college. Uh, we welcome folks who are interested in our advisory council to come and talk about what's happening in your community so that we're aware of that. And it can either tailor our programming to you or you can hear from other agencies about what's going on with them. And uh you will hopefully vote to the letter with the ones that you don't skip. Uh, if you know of anybody who can teach English one-on-one, has a master's in English or has a master's of any kind and is familiar with higher ed, we also call it one-on-one. College Success Strategies, of course, we're looking for instructors there as well. And if you feel that our equity and inclusion course will be right for your agency, we're happy to entertain talking. So, I think that's it.
Yeah.
So we are a really, really good place compared to maybe some of the dire tones I heard last year. And uh just want to thank you for your continued support down in the school district and the Starbucks experience just made my day. And I entertain.
Any comments for Dr. Ray? I don't see. Thank you very much.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Next step, we have our first public hearing of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. So I'll reopen that. Do you have anyone signed up to speak on that public hearing? Uh, anyone in the audience here who'd speak on this proposed budget? Alright. And is that ready to be closed then or is that?
Yeah.
So there appears to be no more additional public comment at that time, so I close the public hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Our next public hearing is Parks Trails and Open Spaces Plan. I'll go in open public hearing and we're gonna have a presentation by our senior planner, Naomi Montes.
Good evening, everybody. Staff, council, and all of the members of the public, I can't tell you how much longer you can see people show up, get comments. So I'm gonna have to wait and get started because this has already been a long night and I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it any longer. So what tonight, uh, where do we talk about in this big presentation, just giving you a really broad overview of what we've done. So I'm not gonna be going into any detail. Uh, but to give you an idea of everything that has happened so far and where we're at. Uh, one thing that I want to make a note of is that this is a public hearing. The document is not finalized and we are still making some last minute final revisions. And so I, I wanted to make a note that this is not the final. So next slide. Alright, so really, uh, really simple. I'm only gonna talk about three different things. The timeline, um, what it is like, uh, as far as going through the document, we'll go in chronological order. And then any comments at the end. Next slide. Okay, I won. So this, I made a detail on purpose. You could see all of the different things that we did to reach out to the public, which I think probably marginally successful considering we have people here to give comments. So we did something right. And so you'll see all of the different steps and this is, this is a simplified timeline. These are probably like the major things we did to engage and to produce this document. Next slide. Alright, so in the proposed draft of Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, there's an introduction. And that introduction really looks at community interests and um why we need Parks Trails and Open Spaces. Uh, it also talks about inventory, the types of assessments we have to do. And then moves on to explaining who manages it physically. Uh, and uh how many employees are involved in taking care of all of our parks, trails, and open spaces. The planning department works hand-in-hand with public works. The planning department is all of the, the um, does all the rules, uh, does the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, all of the things that you don't see. Have the statement to ask for grants and to make plans for future programs, which then, once we get that funding, that is brought into fruition and managed by public works. Excellent. So one of the first things that you'll see in the draft plan is that we go over the community profile. And I just realized I forgot my glasses and I can't leave a small font. Apologies. Just want, give me one second. At least I'm not wearing. Alright, nobody else was. I'm not. I was just wondering if you're anything more. Oh, man. So, one of the things, and this was brought up tonight by other people that were speaking, both in the um councils as a whole and then in the meeting, is that the community is rapidly evolving. That doesn't, that's not necessarily a bad thing. Uh, some people spoke earlier, the arts and culture, and that is intimately connected to Parks Trails and Open Space because that's where those things happen. So there is a relationship there. Now, as the community grows and evolves, this is the physical space that holds all of these events and creates the, the unique environment that people uh really love here. So one of the things in any plan that you'll see, um, this was in the Housing Action Plan two, is that when coming up with proposed goals and policies, you have to look at the numbers. You have to deal with the number of enchanted look at demographics, you have to look at trends, historical context, what the residents need, um, assessing the parks, when you see the fix, to all of that analysis. And then after that, uh, you look at how to put together what the future will look like and it's reflected in the goals and the policies. And then finally, it's shown in the capital facilities. Uh, capital facilities improvement program. Next slide. So community engagement, this is always a big deal because you need to be able to craft the document based on the community policies. Next slide. These are some of the things that we did to try to reach out to the community. We did a survey first at the beginning of the year. Then we did our first open house on March, March twenty-fourth, September twenty-fifth was the second open house. Uh, we did some community tabling at Duval Days and uh birthday, the Earth Day event. And then we also did focus group discussions. I think I've recognized some people here that we have those discussions with. We also um had a very steering committee. We have four meetings with them. And we went into depth discussing the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan and plenty of other outreach. So, next slide. These are some of the key points from the survey. Ninety percent of the respondents consider public parks an essential quality of life. This is something that's very important to people here. Eighty percent visit the parks or recreation facilities at least monthly. And the highest number that needed that people mentioned was uh walking and biking trips. Trails came up a lot. And then ninety-two percent expressed a strong interest in more trails. Next slide. Alright, so here's some of the pictures, the open houses that we did. We did give feedback. Uh, we looked at project recommendations, uh, looked at what people felt were the biggest priorities and uh what they really wanted. They want to preserve the open space. They want trails. They want to expand the trails. They want things um to be taken care of and uh that's about it. So next slide. Community tabling, uh, really it was more raise awareness. It wasn't getting any community feedback unless they were supposed, of course, we wrote it down. But it was more just letting people know that we were doing this. Um, and then we also gathered from people if they wanted to get it to us. And then just like I mentioned, Earth Day, RB Day Festival, I do bald days. Uh, complexion and attendance. That wasn't just for us doing the tabling, just for the total of it. Next slide. So the, one of the things that we also did was focus groups. Focus groups, uh, we wanted to talk to people that frequently use the Parks Trails and Open Space, which are um different sports organizations around Duval. Um, and then uh how they use that. We also spoke to uh community groups that are focused on environmental protection. Next slide. And then the steering committee. So we did a full public outreach, invited anybody who wanted to participate in the steering committee. Um, and then we then created a steering committee. We have four meetings. Next slide. And so now we're going to move on and you'll see this in the draft document. Uh, this is where there's, first, we have to look at what we have and then we have to decide what are we gonna call it. Next slide. So inventory, uh, there are five different types of Parks Trails and Open Spaces. You have community parks, neighborhood parks, pocket parks, or smaller little parks that are tucked into the neighborhood. Then you have special use facilities and just general open space. Next slide. Duval's park system, some key points. There's fourteen parks, four point four miles of trails total, a hundred and thirty-five acres of parkland and ninety-six acres of open space. Next slide. So focusing in on Parks and Open Space, next slide. One of the things that we did early on was perform an assessment of existing park features. When we did that assessment, we did a couple of things. We identified maintenance issues, we looked at opportunities for future improvements. And then finally, uh, we wanted to look at this information so that it could guide the dealt development with future projects, what we're going to repair. And you'll see that coming up in the next few slides. Next slide. So a gap analysis, which you all hear this term because many plans have a gap analysis, is basically what do we have? Where do we need to be? What do we need to do to get there? So that's the gap. Where do we need to be? What do we need to do to get there? So that's the gap. Next slide. Level of service standards, which you'll hear in Ackerman LOS. You'll hear that referred to. Um, in other policy planning documents and LOA stands for level of service. And basically what that means is it's a metric. That the city uses in measuring our performance to meet the community expectations. Um, level of service takes a snapshot and evaluates, for example, you can look at level of service for streets. Um, transportation, in this particular case, looking at park. Facilities, you know, where are we at? Where are we supposed to be? There's different ways of grading level service standards and what do we need to do to get there? Next slide. Alright, so I wanted to show you some of the community feedback on park conditions. So, one of the first ones too was revitalizing that. Right now, this feedback comes from open houses, the survey. All of the different ways that we spoke to people and this is what rose and came out of that. Removing physical access barriers, prioritizing conservation and maintenance of natural areas. Uh, installing user conveniences, expanding recreational opportunities. Increasing go ball courts and dog activities. And, uh, improving water access, upgrading the playgrounds, create covered spaces and increasing community events. So. Those are the big ones. Next slide. Now, there's another section in the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan that specifically focuses on trails. The, the information that I just shared with you. Prior, it, it's another chapter that's dedicated to, chapter that comes up that focuses just on trails. Next slide. So this is some of the, um, key community feedback that we received on trails. Most popular reason for visiting Duval Parks is to use the trail. Uh, strong interest in expanding trails, which we have brought, I brought up earlier and then. Uh, one of the desires for trails is additional amenities such as better lighting, um, restrooms, water stations and waste disposal facilities. Next slide. Alright, so in any policy document, you have all the assessments. You look at gap analysis, you look at what we have, where do we need to be, what have people told us? And then you start shaping the rules and policies. Next slide. So the goals and policies you'll see are separated into eight major categories. We look at. How do we include people? How do we make it accessible to them? The second is how do we acquire things? How do we expand? Third is how we design it? How do we develop it as we're expanding it and what is our plan to keep it maintained in good condition? Then how do we protect it? That's four. Five is how do we preserve the cultural and history? What's the history of that land? How was it used before? Um, and what is the culture of that land is how we use it? Number six is trails and connectivity, real big focus on trails. And then you have number seven, which is management administration. All the boring stuff, how do you get it done? And then, although it's. Um, then, um, number eight, which new. So this will be a surprise because you haven't seen this and we've done these presentations before. And the reason that this comes up is because, um, anytime we do a non-project policy document this big. We do a CIPA, which is the state environmental law. We kept some facts and it's also required that we do those things for policy documents, even though we're not. Physically building anything. The document will lead to the construction. During that time, we have a comment period and people are invited to provide us with comments and there's a window which is comments come in. We received comments. We received comments from the Snoke Palmie Tribe. We received comments from the, the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife and a few others. Um, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, they provided us comments with a few little things that they, um, were hoping that we could. Make some tweaks to the language. The Snoke Palmie Tribe provided us the most extensive list of comments. And so in collaboration with them, in the close relationship that we have with them, we did add an eighth goal. Specifically for that reason. So the language that you'll see in there and if you look in the documents, you'll see the letter from the tribe and you'll see how those edits were made. In response to some, so next. Next slide. Capital improvement is, okay, this is what we have, right? We did the assessment. This is where we're, this is where we wanna be. Here's the gap. This is what people have said. Here, we're gonna do it. The goal is to do this. These are all the policies. Later on, there's going to be rules to enact those things and then that. Final piece of this is capital improvement. And really what that means is, next slide. Is how we're going to do this. Short-term goals. Moderate-term, mid-term goals and then long-term goals. When you think. Near-term or short-term, that's what can we do in the next three or five years? And then, that's a list and, and some of the stuff that's listed on here comes directly from the public feedback that we received. From the open houses, what people wrote on the boards, or people sent email, they sent emails to us. Um, everything rose to the top and those are some of the, there's other things, but these are some of the big ones that stood out. So this is a reflection of all of the evaluation and public feedback. Next slide. And then we have midterm and long-term goals. And when you think about long-term, ten to twenty years. So if you think about twenty years ago, where everybody was at in this room twenty years ago, like, that's a long time. So, some of these goals are more expansive. And there's probably going to be updates, uh, before the twenty-year period, but you have to do that when you're looking at capital facilities because of the cost. You have to be ready for it. So, some of the long-term goals that were reflected and, and the work that we did and the outreach that we did included some more extensive. Park renovations, uh, acquiring additional parkland. And that could also be wrapped into really, uh, connecting and expanding the trail system. Then, um, a, a dog park or off-leash dog areas and then trail system planning and implementation. So, those are the long-term plans and the, and so those are the things that you make happen. Those things cost money. The capital, uh, improvement program lays all of that. That is still being refined. There's going to be a final document. It is not reflected in this packet, but, um, you will see it coming up soon. Next slide. Right now, if you're looking at the long-term twenty years and you're looking at the cost estimate, um. Everything that you see in the draft Parks Trails and Open Space Plan to make the improvements that were requested, the emerge from analysis. Total ninety-eight million dollars. Near-term is fourteen million, midterm twenty-six million and long-term, the cost over twenty years, fifty-eight million. There's a note at the bottom right there and it's something that I just mentioned. We're waiting for some final tables and figures and for those of you that love looking at the tables and. Figures because that is where the information is at. It is still being refined. Next slide. So this is the recommendation we're making tonight, um, before I, I step down from my. Presentation is, tonight staff is recommending that we keep the public comment. Period of the hearing open. That means that we don't close it and then we accept comments from people up until November nineteenth. The reason that we're doing this is because we're still refining with the document. So we wanted to give people a chance to give us more comments. That is all I have. I appreciate your patience and. I will sit down and see if you can give your comments.
Okay, so we'll start calling the people off the list and then we'll just open it up for double check anyway.
So, I'm gonna start from the bottom. Younger folks here?
So you can state your name and then you'll have three minutes.
Holly Martin. My name is Holly Martin. My family's invited by Jesus over three years. And what we go to provide for the site of the authority is. Uh, value of a creation, which is at least included. Or this day, which is thirty-five minutes. My brother is saying, I'm not like cancer, I'm always thirty-five. Thirty-five and sixteen minutes away. It would be great if they come to do four open space into a bike that we're looking to help me go and find it. Um, with over eighty acres, you can make lots of trails and you could add, oh, you know, a function. The ground community is nice and respectful and always on helpful if you need help. Though I come from the entire exits, but always have been encouraging. Now, my cause also kind of like the environment and they help. They make trails and we go jumps and even when, when some of them, they will help. He just had a girl and he didn't tell us. Workdays and trail days or trail cleanups on roads, go on the community, even for kids to get involved. There are also old engagements of. Evergreen, I believe, we always, fortunately, in the, in my book, we go and join this year and I'm going to next year on Florida. New organizations can help with the city on this project to help. Providing fundraisers and for the venture town, for races to families. And some of them, by family and many, many other local networks without you see the place. To invite others to see the video loss.
Thank you. And Darren Bennett.
Good evening, Capitol members and everyone in the attendance. Um, I practically don't need to say anything after comments. Uh, I appreciate that very much. Um. I come here tonight, uh, to lend my support for, uh, the trail system and potential development of the Duval Open Space, uh, to include those trails. Um, as a coach, uh, for the Cedar Crest Mountain Bike Club. Um, we represent, uh, an organization in the community that is explicitly inclusive. We. Include everybody from sixth grade to twelfth grade that's inside the River View School District. Whether that's they're a part of the public school district, homeschool, private, whatever. Um, so we really bring together a large number of kids and to give you an example, this past, uh, fall season, we had thirty kids. Uh, that were participating. Um, we also had thirty coaches that were participating. So we have a really big system of support inside of that. And for our spring season, it goes even bigger. We can have fifty students that are participating in all those grade levels. The problem is, is for us to practice, it means we're trying. We're going to Pope McDonald, act for the closest. We just recently lost what we had available at Moss Lake. Um, we have Cherry Valley, sort of, um, so we don't have a direct community location where we can really. Demonstrate to these kids the skills and trail stewardship that we wanna talk about. So. That's the ultimate goal is to build something that the student. Know is something that they can not only be there for them and have easy access to. But that we can build them to understand what trail stewardship is and why it's important that communities develop these trails. Because they're something that we can give back to and volunteer and support. And, and that's, we've made of the second point is, we have some really great partners in this community that could help out. Um, Evergreen Mountain Biking is the biggest. Um, and when we talk about. Building the trails and designing the trails. The key thing is Evergreen has done that. They've done it for municipalities across the state. And they have an expertise that could really lend themselves to the planning department and to the community. Um, they also have a volunteer organization that is huge. They get thirty, forty people at their volunteer events. To come out and give their time freely to help maintain trails. You'd also get that with what we have with Cedar Crest. You know, I'm starting a program right now where students can take part in trail stewardship. So we can go to Pope McDonald, we can go to Paradise Valley, we can give back our time. And, and start to learn what it, it is and how important it is. The last thing is obviously with Evergreen, I've already reached out to them. They have expressed an interest in how they can support this. Um, so, you know, I believe they'll be reaching out to the planning department, uh, to provide some of that information, how they can do that. So, you know, please take that opportunity and obviously the, um, from the statistics that we're done, there's a great interest in having. Uh, something like that. So, we appreciate any support that you can have. Thank you very much.
David Horn with the Seattle Aspern Co. Society.
Hello, thank you for today. Can you come speak? I'm a Duval resident as well as an event coordinator with the Seattle Aspern Co. Society. Uh, society runs, uh, four or five star parties around the region. We just recently added this year Duval to that list. And it's the best one of all five of them. We have this at the Big Rock, uh, the ball fields. Um, we've had huge assessments so far, triple and quadruple the number of people attending. We've got residents coming out bringing their tall stuffs. I think we had over three hundred people the night of the Aurora. We had, we had a hundred seventy-five to two hundred people at events. We were expecting thirty to forty people. So it's been a huge success so far this year. And what makes the Big Rock Ball Field's great? It's nice and flat. It's at the edge of the city. It's away from most of the lights of the city. Actually, when it's LEDs five or six years ago, that really degraded our night sky. Uh, be able to see stars in Milky Way. That's the best spot. Um, and as phase two comes on for the expansion, I would hope that we would keep the lighting as it is. Keep that control that we can turn off the lights, have control on timers, so we can get true dark skies out there. Um, to continue this. In two thousand point five, we're, we're gonna start outreach to local schools. I've already contacted the science teacher at Tulke. Middle School to bring the students out to do some stargating out there. Um, or we may do it, do it at the field at Tulke. Also wanna start reaching out to the plans in twenty twenty-five to Cedar Crest. For the arts department and the science classes there, students out there. Um, this is a public outreach. It's free to the community. We get people from all over the valley. Coming to this from Monroe, the Carnation, um, Woodville, even people all the way from Seattle come in here because their sky's horrible for doing. Um, so as we expanded it, I'd like. To hope we still have control over the lighting that is good for dark skies. We can turn all the lights off for this. Have them on timers, have them run by the phone, read it, just do it from a phone. It's pretty awesome. Um, but I would also love to consider some red lighting. It's in key areas, so people can find a way from the parking lot to the tell so fields. Without me having to spend forty-five minutes putting red road lights up. Just as part of the lighting system would be fantastic. So, uh, my ask is. Please keep it a dark sky site. Let's keep it the best one in the region. Thank you.
David Andrews with the Cedar Crest Mountain Bike.
So Darren and Tom have raised so much about mountain biking. Uh, I'm actually gonna try and get some specific ideas and thoughts I have about the comprehensive plan that I reviewed. I think the count of mentions of the word bicycle is about two hundred and ninety-seven. I only found one negative mention about someone complaining about them being on the tennis courts. That'd be a great way to get them off the tennis courts, of course. Build more trails. Um, but I wanna talk like, one thing honestly, it's really unique about mountain biking is, um. I coach soccer, I taught taekwondo, I've done a bunch of. Activities with children. Mountain biking is the first time I've seen kids and adults doing the same thing where the learning happens continuously and it's. Very little about mountain biking, honestly. Uh, by the way, Tom, I usually do the sixth graders. I'll see you next year. Uh. And the two things I do are beginner riders and the junior assistant coaches. And one of the great things about junior assistant coaches is if we build a program where we can pass down the ethos of mountain biking, which I'm. Talked about very eloquently and. All of that is to the advantage. The specific thing I wanna talk about, I guess one more thing. It's the only sport I've ever engaged in with my kids where we are doing the same thing all the time and it allows for so much inter, more interaction. And that's why we have like thirty coaches to thirty students. We do have often, one-to-one thing because the people. The, the parents come out, they don't just sit in the car. They'll sit in the car once and they'll be like, why am I not out riding? And then they. Um. I wanna suggest that, um, that one of the risks in the comprehensive plan with nine to three in the future, it mentioned that there is some. In the eighties and nineties, nobody just could have been mountain biking class. One of the things that I think changing in mountain biking right now is the introduction of low-power. E-bikes. And these low-powered e-bikes are going to make Duval a much more likeable city. Right now, I mean, going up one forty-fifth. It'd be great if I wanna get in shape, but I, like, I don't wanna do it to just go get my milk. Um. The low-powered e-bike, it's like a hand on your back as you pedal. It's not a motorcycle. It doesn't do that, but as you pedal, you just feel a lot stronger. It's a lot less energy. Uh, the trail system that we have is not one that's great for getting kids of mountain biking age to the places they wanna go. Which are things like the library, the park and the high school. The high school has a lot of work to do on bike ability, but getting that last mile up to the bike to, to the high school would be great and also feeding neighborhoods. To there. Uh, the other thing I wanna say is paved pump tracks. Um, they look a lot more like a skate park. If you're not familiar with the pump track. The pump track is a mountain bike, um, course that you go on. It's usually an oval and you don't pedal. You actually pump it like you imagine pumping a swing as you put your legs out as you go downhill. On a mountain bike, you put down the handlebars and the pedals as you go downhill and, and it absorbs as. On a mountain bike, you put down the handlebars and the pedals as you go downhill and, and absorb as you go uphill. And you don't have to pedal. You go faster and faster. And the first time I got this right, I think right off the side. It feels like so big. Leavenworth has the best one in the state. I drive to Leavenworth to go to it and take my kids to that. We could easily have that here. Once you pave a pump track, it becomes one of the lowest costs of maintenance of any park facility. So it also, I'll just say survives floods. So if you wanted something to put down in the Carmar park, go there or in the new space, I think to the north of Carmar Park. There's lots of options. Go in the Big Rock Expansion next to the skate park. Um, skate park is not great for mountain bikes. I've, I've done it. I've tried it over the rims. Um, so that's my two things in the side. Think about the e-bike future. We are going to be ridable now, uh, especially as the cost of bikes comes down. And the second is, um, think about hard skate pump tracks and, and something that I guess the other thing is the difference between a pump track and a trailer is when you get on a trailer, you don't see it until you get to the end. When you get on a pump track, it is exhausting and you go to your, your lap and you, you go sit on the side and catch your breath with the four other people waiting and it becomes a social thing, especially for kids. So locating somewhere that's ridable, this within the city and in the bicycle network is important too. So please think about e-bikes and paved pump track. Thank you.
One who has not signed up at the local speed, um, the truck show. All right. Yeah. So if there are no objections from council, we'll follow the staff recommendation, keep it open, um, into the next meeting on the nineteenth. So we have more opportunity. With that, we'll move on to our existing business. And first thing is the Agenda Bill twenty-four dash sixty, adoption of amended twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. Um, I'll hand this over to Director McMen. You want to agree of the presentation? So you're with combined ones. It will just go through a section by section.
That's the one?
Yep, that's it. The twenty twenty-three, twenty-four end of biennial budget adjustment. We go to the next slide. So we'll just go through an overview, revenue summary, front summary. We'll talk about some changes by fund and then, um, ending on balance and excess. Okay, so the, um, the end of biennial review and modification, um, this is a requirement, um, that we do at the end of year review. Um, it is also very helpful to provide, um, a, a more accurate beginning of balance. Let's look at our twenty-five, twenty-six budget and, um, our resources available for that. Um, it also reflects the changes that have occurred throughout the biennium. Um, and of course we take a conservative approach when considering these events. So this is, um, an overall revenue summary. Um, and you'll see there's a, a small increase in tax, which is represented by a complete revenue, um, license from permitting line, um, education reduction, we're building permit revenue and charges for services. We have a reduction in our impact fee revenue represented there. Um, I know there, the general, um, the bottom line, uh, there's a rejection in our general facility charges and put that reduction resistance. So, um, this is our expenditure summary and this is total for all funds rolled up. Um, just to kind of give you an overview. Um, we did experience many vacancies throughout twenty twenty-four. So of course we have a reduction in our salaries and our benefits. Um, the supply increase that you see here is to accommodate our IT infrastructure needs for. And we have some changes in our professional services on our capital and basically to meet our current, um, project needs. Um, and then I've, um, identified the, uh, Big Rock Park land purchase. So this is a slide that just shows the summary of changes by fund. So that you can see our general fund is being reduced quite a bit. Um, we've been very conservative with funds since the beginning with salaries. Um, most of the changes that are happening are for the funds are for capital project changes and needs. We can go to the next slide. It just represents our change in ending fund balance. Um, this does identify, uh, the additional half million dollars, um, grant and grant for pink conservation for Big Rock Park. So that has been included in here. We can go to the next slide. So basically next steps would be open up for discussion and then adoption of the amendments. Okay, was council on any questions or the session? So remember that one?
Yeah, I just, uh, I'm struggling a little bit to try to follow, um, like for example, the general fund is a fund that I, you know, feel like, um, you know, curious about what's happening in it just because we're projected to have such a thing in short fall. And it showed that, um, expenses were going to be down, but also if you look at the revenue, like revenue is substantially down about a million dollars compared to, um, what has been budgeted. And so I'm trying to figure out like what exactly happened, but I, I, there isn't really a table in here to show. Um, if you look at should be attached to the gen- agenda bill, there is a projection spreadsheet. But there isn't a comparison of what it was before. And so
Oh, you mean from?
Yeah, and so I, I just saw the totals of what you're projecting it to be, but I don't know where, uh, because it says budget to actual change in revenues for general fund is down one million, six thousand five twenty-three. And it just shows the numbers for each category, but it doesn't say, um, like where the changes were. Um, so I'm just curious if you could explain why we're projecting a million dollars plus revenue in the general fund. Okay, hold on a sec. Yeah. And I kind of have my suspicion about what it might be and, um, maybe this, maybe you'll be able to what it might be, um, just some other reimbursement from transfers in, um, to reimburse for some of our appropriations or, um, the strategic fund. Do you think that maybe just the timing they weren't done and it doesn't carry on? Um, maybe, I don't know. Hold on a second. I apologize for that.
It's okay. Hold up.
And I don't know, maybe there's like a line item that just shows here for everything changed.
It's the, so we're not provided by the detail for the projections for the, okay. We have a platform in Open Gov where everything is recorded. So that's what I'm trying to pull up, which is really slow. I'm not seeing, I'm going to get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, so it's just, um, it just says a good million dollars less. Gotta figure out, um, what that would be that we were down on.
And yeah, if you want to get back to.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
Any other questions or just discussion? Not seeing. So I know we have an open question, so I'm not sure where it falls without, um, wanting to move to approve this tonight. Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, so the general response, I would like to ask her, how, how do you feel? Do you want to leave, leave this open? And if we do leave it open, is there a problem with that, uh, certainly? Yeah, considering that, uh, tonight?
We don't want to feel comfortable to vote on it without understanding, uh, maybe. Yeah, I mean, and they're happy to be by a million, but then it's, uh, you know, how I go, I don't know, comparison of what, what. And so I, I think that would be helpful for me to understand because that wasn't the only fund that I was curious about, which is the biggest difference for me. I would.
Director, I'm just gonna mention that, you know, the amendment ordinance is to amend the appropriation for expenditures. Revenue can play into that, but revenue is really, it's not a part of what we're amending. It's the expenditure approval that's being amended.
Thank you for that, Freddie.
So does council feel like we could move forward with, um, approving those amendments? Because although we're a million dollars short in revenue, where our expenses are, um, you know, one quarter million dollars. And the deadline is the end of the year.
It is.
I know, I definitely thought on the agenda bill, I know the desire would be the sooner the better. Um, I guess I would just open it if there's a motion from council and if I don't hear one, then we'll move on. Uh, councilmember Supple?
Yeah, I'm going to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four sixty, adopting ordinance thirteen thirty-one, which amounts ordinance thirteen twenty-five to account for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget estimated expenditures.
Is there a second? A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any other discussion? Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, I, I don't, I don't want to sound like a naysayer here or anything, but, um, if there's no harm in leaving it open, I, I don't see why we shouldn't, you know, delay this, you know, till at least next, uh, next meeting. Till we get more, more clarity, uh, on, on Jennifer's question. I think it's a, it's a valid question. I'd like to hear the answer. So as a result, I would, I'm gonna, for, for only that reason, I, I'm gonna vote no on, on this.
Okay. Any other discussion before we call votes on the motion on the table? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Just to make sure, I think that was pretty clear who it was, or do you need a roll call?
Um, it's clear, but if you would like me to do roll call and more than.
Okay, so that the motion passes and we'll move on. And I, I know there will still be follow-up on that.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty-four dash fifty-four, adoption of resolution on twenty twenty-five B schedule. And again, Director McMen, you can go to the next slide.
Um, that's one.
So this is the twenty twenty-five B resolution. We've gotten the next slide. So there have been no changes in the previous presentation. Um, this just puts out the, um, indicators that we use to increase our fees. Um, the CPIU, we have our CCI, and then of course we're just way I C. We can go to the next slide. So basically next steps would be discussion and the adoption of the twenty twenty-five B resolution. Are you, do we have questions or discussion? Councilmember Napan?
Yeah, I just, um, the fire charges, uh, for their permits are, I mean, a lot of them tripled, more than tripled. And I'm just trying to understand, uh, yeah, that's a lot for our, you know, businesses who might be doing renovation individuals. It's, that's, it's unsafe. So I just was curious, um, why? And I know that's not us that makes that decision.
Think or to the administrator, has there a response?
Um, yes, Director Thomas has been working with, uh, the higher district on the I L A. We provide more context and inspiration.
Hi, Kaining. Hi. Mayor of town, town hall, he wants to respond to the earlier. Uh, so one of the results, uh, came from the higher district contact next year with Eastside Fire is that the costs are gonna go, I think, if those are the true costs actually doing the work. It was likely that they weren't collecting their full fees before, but now it looks like a much larger, so the gap's a little bit larger. Uh, we will be coming back, we have conversations with the fire district, uh, over the last couple of weeks. We'll be looking at a new I L A. They're working with Wyndham Fire. Technically, they are contracting out their work, but we still have our I L A, actually Wyndham Fire, not this gonna go over to Eastside Fire. But the rates are going up in January because of Eastside Fire, that is doing that work starting January first. And so, yeah, we, we realize that the rates are going down substantially. We had those conversations. They will come to council and probably where we'll federate off of their I L A. And we can talk to them about the rates as well, just in generals. I think once we set those down for this year, we shouldn't see large changes every year. It's just this one year that we're gonna see large uh, changes. It's really an impact to developing the community more than it is currently.
There are questions or discussion? Does anyone want to think of motion tonight, Thomas?
I'm going to approve Agenda Bill twenty twenty-four fifty-four, adoption of resolution of twenty twenty-five B schedules.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve twenty-four dash fifty-four. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say no. Great, motion passes. Thank you. Next step is Agenda Bill twenty-four dash fifty-five, adoption of ordinance on carbon D tax levies for twenty twenty-five. Once again, Director McMen, I mean, but all tonight, yes. You can go to the next slide. Um, so basically there have been no changes since the previous presentation and I've just received the latest, um, update from King County on the levy information and has not changed. That'd be rates at point nine ninety-eight. Um, our allowable, um, levy will be two million, six forty-six, six fifty-three. Okay, the next slide, so basically discussion and the adoption of the twenty-five per century. Great. Is there other questions or discussion? Or motion? Uh, councilmember people?
I'm going to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four fifty-five, adopting an ordinance to fix the amount of the annual add the law on property tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, providing for severability and established.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next step is discussion on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six preliminary budget with Director McMen.
Do you, when did you want to do your sign?
I'll do mine after. Okay. You can go to the next. Uh, okay, so just to recap, um, these are all the things that have happened. We've done the preliminary presentations, the presentation of revenue sources, all the department budget presentations, we've had a little.
We've had a little clearing, um, and so we're here, uh, go to the next slide. Um, so this just shows a revenue summary. Um, you can see the past actual, the twenty four estimated, and then our twenty five and twenty six, um, requested budget, um. Now, we've got a, a decrease, um, in our charges for services due to, um, general facility charging. The transfers in twenty five have to do with capital projects, maybe. Okay, go to the next slide. This is a overall rollout of our expenditure summaries, um, showing actual twenty four estimated and, um, twenty five, twenty six budget request. This shows our fund balance with our twenty three, twenty four projected revenue and expenses. Um, and then our twenty five, twenty six revenue and expense, um, projected budget, um, ending fund balances. Um, you know, some of the work that we've done along the way, um, we, you know, relieved some of that pressure what we initially thought would need in resources. Um, so our general plan to any fund balance is looking a little bit better. We originally had, um, preliminary, um. Those are the changes since the first, uh, or the previous presentation, um, have to do with changes for capital projects. This represents the increase in, um, in conservation grant funds, um, corporates in our land purchase for Big Rock. And then you can see the, the changes in the ending fund balances. This is just a, um, updated, uh, orchard, so I'm not even sure that I can give you a more visual look at our departments and our state. So the next steps would be questions. Of course, we're looking for adoption, so at least next.
And then we have one more budget, so.
Yeah.
For our month, so, um, we continue to refine the budget. So we've done a preliminary budget, um, on September seventeenth. We continue to update the data, um, the council packet, so you all have some updated data, including, you know, line item, position summary, uh, quest for which funds are expending for capital projects. We did, uh, estimation that was, uh, requested by Councilmember Isaacson, uh, kind of illustrating how conservative we budgeted in terms of what we're estimating for expenses and then the revenues that we brought in. So providing additional information, then, um, since we've met last time, we've made a couple more potential refinements or, um, a couple of refinances to the budget, but also things that we wanted to alert you that you will see in the next, um, presentation of data that will be in the next packet.
I'm sorry, it hit that one?
It is this one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping I can see it on my laptop after that. This will be big enough for me to see it often. I have two, not for my glasses, I did operate. So, uh, next slide.
Sorry, give me one second.
So, um, as Director McMenon, I continue to refine, uh, we expenditures and revenues. So for instance, the data that you saw today is reflective of just this week getting the King County, King County Conservation Fund grant, T I B grant came in. So, you know, every week we have something new, we're trying to continue to revise this, um, to give you the most up to date information. And so these are a couple more changes that, um, we want to talk about, that we anticipate being, uh, present in the budget or potentially present in the budget, uh, at the next meeting. So I want to provide a data to council on a potential twenty twenty six, uh, Fourth of July fireworks display. So you all have kind of the cost estimates and, uh, at a decision point about whether or not you want to add a Fourth of July special event to twenty twenty six. Um, hopefully you all got some information, I think, not, it's last one we prepared for. Um, potential, Councilmember Nappan brought up the potential of doing a volunteer environmental cleanup day. You know, we can budget for that in varying degree of cost. And we would want to cover supplies, potential, um, plantings, um, staff time for that. And if we want to broaden it to have more educational and environmental impact, we would want to put some money in the budget into special events to support something like that either in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Um, the mayor, Mayor Bertam, uh, thank you, uh, for writing one observation. I applied to be in the University of Washington Evan School, building and selling a local government graduate certificate program. It's under ten thousand dollars with a grant from the Washington, uh, City Administrators Association. Um, I was, uh, able to be invited to complete at the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. Um, so that will begin next year, so, um, we're going to put some money in that. Haven't been accepted, I hope to find out in the next few weeks. And we did meet with Cultural Commission, uh, last Monday, it was the last week. We've, um, uh, put the meetings on hiatus, waiting for the budget to be passed. Um, so right now, the projects that they have left are projects who are already in the twenty twenty four budget. However, we met with artists for the Person Virginia mural, and a student artist was also selected, and they will not be able to finish, finish those murals because of the wet rain. And so we're going to roll over the money. So you'll see a new addition in the Economic Development Fund to roll over the money from twenty twenty four, so we can finish those projects. That's for a binder, the Person Virginia mural, art has ten thousand dollars attached to it. That's been rolled over, I think, Director Thomas, three or four budgets now. Um, so the money is, we're going to get this mural, it's in funnel design, it's gorgeous. But, uh, the artist doesn't think that we can finish it this, this winter before the end of the year. She needs about two months of dryish weather to finish it. Um, we are making adjustments to the Police Records Administrator position with our new hire. Um, we have some wage progression or wage compression between our admin and our records administration, uh, records administrator. We did, uh, talk to the teamsters and we negotiate maybe advancement of the step increase there to make sure that there isn't too much wage compression between those two positions, particularly because, um, our current records administrators doing a lot of training of that employee. There was a lot of spread between those two positions. But again, uh, that is something that needs to be appropriated in the budget, any reclassification or advancement beyond policy of a step increase, and this is fencing two step increases, so that will go in the budget for council. And then finally, you'll also see a rollover, we're really hoping to get the plank project completed. Um, the money is, uh, appropriated by council, it's been in, um, budgets for, I think, the last two cycles. It is committed, but the artist just picked up the last of the planks, so we don't think that we're going to be able to pay the invoices along with the work done. So they'll see a rollover of industry through a spin fund to finish off that. Um, this is also the opportunity in the next two weeks for you all to get to Mayor Bertam, any budget amendments you would like to see. So whether that's putting money in the Economic Development Fund based on the presentations you heard tonight, or thinking about what we want to do with Human Services Grant Fund right now, that's funded at the most council has ever funded. Uh, it's at forty thousand in the budget. So we began the last biennium at twenty thousand for those human services grants. And over time, we, um, added, we doubled the amount for human services grant, obviously, it's going to great use, the need is great. So making those decisions, um, you can let Mayor Bertam know by Thursday, that'll give us sufficient time to cost any budget amendments you want. And then, um, get them into the next round for the November nineteenth meeting. So we can be prepared to present, uh, the budget to you with a hopeful adoption. Any questions, either for Director McMenon or me?
Councilmember Nappan? Yeah, this is just a huge appreciation to Director McMenon because, um, I didn't know that they were updated. I don't know when the packet got updated. And so I'm just seeing it now that you broke it down by department, so that there were subtitles at the department level. I was really struggling trying to understand, like, you know, how it changed. And so this is really helpful, and I know it's a lot of work, and I just, I press a huge amount of appreciation for getting it done. I feel like I can understand what's going on, um.
And I totally understand, absolutely. I mean, it's just with everything going on in our department, it's, we're just struggling to keep above water. But no, I, it's was important that you have that information.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. So I don't have any questions based on that, because I didn't know what was there until now. So, um, yeah, I might have, um, but not tonight.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, were we going to take a vote on this?
No, we want to give as much opportunity as possible for council to come up with any amendments. But I would say now is the time. Uh, we don't anticipate beyond the information on this slide and anything that council has. Any more refinement to this budget, um, unless Steve Alves saying gets another grant, which seems to happen, which. Cause so, um, we anticipate that at the next meeting, we'll have an Agenda Bill for a vote. Um, again, we, uh, we think we're at a place where, um, absent any major amendments that would, um, have, you know, a robust council conversation or deliberation, um, city staff have kind of, in our minds, completed most of the work for a budget to get to council.
Okay, any other questions before I go back to, okay, Councilmember Nappan?
Yeah, I remembered I had a question on the summer stage answer, that was really helpful. Um, one thing I was trying to understand is we used to pay, um, uh, uh, twenty thousand dollars a year or something like that. We need to help organize, um, summer stage, and I wasn't sure if that was included in the, because we've been given because I think we stopped, obviously paying that, let's see, house, um. The, the numbers looked pretty level, and so I didn't see, I would expect you to see that we would have spent twenty thousand dollars less, or I, I wasn't sure what was happening.
Uh, let me take a look again at that spreadsheet. It is possible that we did not include the professional services contract for twenty one, twenty two. Twenty three, we didn't have that.
Right.
Um, so twenty three, twenty four, we didn't have that professional services contract. Um, wait, no, only twenty four, we paid it in twenty three. But I suspect that the money that you were given was for sound, and based on the way the request was written, I think, um, Brian or Captain took it literally and didn't look for professional purposes. I will make sure that we update the summer stage, um, spreadsheet and get it back to you.
Okay.
Great, um, yeah.
Thanks. Other questions or discussion? Uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, just a few comments on, uh, economic development. And, you know, I think I've said this multiple times, but the economic development budget, uh, that we have in the twenty twenty, twenty three, twenty four budget really was targeted at future revenue growth. Uh, and, uh, the, we accomplished a lot with, with that. We still have more to accomplish. Uh, uh, to remind everyone, uh, our business owners survey, uh, still included items like, uh, uh, which we've done part of, but part of these, but additional expanded events, uh, uh, comparable to, uh, Dival Days, Music Hall, Fan Blast, uh, March the Vegetables, other wonderful things that we've done, uh, increased pedestrian friendliness, especially in the downtown area where we still use the, uh, you know, flags even at night, which is, you know, most of us realize is probably not the safest thing, uh, at, at night. I'd love to see some sort of a lit, uh, uh, crosswalk there. Uh, improved signs to protect drive by traffic, uh, additional public art. Uh, we've done a great job with that, we have more to do with, with, uh, public art. We just discussed suggestions such as, uh, wraps on our, uh, utility boxes and things like that. Uh, and, uh, marketing, marketing continues to be important for us to get the word out, uh, to bring in, uh, outside, you know, outside of business, uh, people outside of Duval that, uh, uh, don't realize what a great place this is to visit, and even people within Duval that necessarily don't realize all the wonderful amenities, uh, we have here in town. So with, with that in mind, uh, I would like to propose, uh, in addition to the, to the budget, I know with the, with the current general fund, uh, potential short calls, not an easy thing for us to consider, but the addition I would like to consider would be, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, specifically targeted towards economic, uh, development. The items I, I just mentioned don't mean other potential items, we would, uh, determine to be a priority. The three hundred thousand, by the way, would, uh, include any rollover that we have. And I don't know what, what we might have, you know, you mentioned the ten thousand dollar rollover for the, uh, Person Virginia artwork, but, uh, any additional funds that we might rollover, you know, I, yeah, so that goes with that three hundred thousand.
Let's see, I'm not sure.
Um, so some of those items that you identified are now. So for instance, um, more, so thinking about events. So one of the general fund categories that actually increased in this budget was, uh, the community events budget in the general fund. It is, we added more money both for marketing for an expanded summer stage and, um, just either funding for impromptu events or greater funding for, um, events, including like a Duval. Um, so we do have the events category, um, that was a more robust, um, budget. In twenty five, twenty six, I don't recall, but I don't.
I'll.
Doubled, but it, there's quite a bit more money to support community events in that lineup.
Right.
Um, you'll also see in the cultural commission line item, there's thirty thousand dollars over the biennium for public art and some events in that line item too. Now, it's not, um, you know, it's not a ton of money, but some of it, some of the things that were, um, in that initial survey back in twenty twenty two, um, you now also find a new, uh, cultural commission line item, which is drawn from that. So a couple of those things you'll find in other courses that touch it. Um, obviously just in, but there are places where some of them.
True, but thank you.
Are there questions or discussion for tonight? Councilmember Nappan?
Yeah, um, I would like to discuss, um, some of the ideas that Councilmember Schaefer, um, brought up. And, you know, I learned how we did for the last budget. If we can split an amount, and then the cycle was ended later, so we weren't, you know, sort of have a little bit of, you know, ranking. Um, I don't know what that would be, for me, I would really want, three hundred thousand is more than I would probably be willing to spend unless the portion of that was on very concrete or, or some of it was on concrete. Um, capital expenses that are one time and not, kind of, going to support for that, that. We were certain the event had a chance, um, for being self sustaining. So, um, anyway, I don't know, um, maybe we can talk, or maybe you have another. If you're fed on the three hundred, um, I don't know exactly how to go about it, but, um, I, I'm interested in that. Wherever we need to go for it.
We can definitely, um, you know, this week, if everyone can just send budget requests or amendment proposed amendments to me, and then I can validate them all and send them to Cynthia. And then when we come back on the nineteenth, we could really go through each one, have a discussion, decide what we're doing, and then go from there. Um, so there.
Did you have something else to add?
No, 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 um, no, then first, um, you know, I, we, uh, Director McMenon, I can develop a budget with five hundred million dollars in a line item, and then you all can debate. So you can see. Five hundred million dollars in a line item and then you all can debate. So you can see a budget proposal. Next meeting with whatever amendments that that doesn't mean that that's the number, but we can show you what different things would look like in a budget proposal. And then you can all deliberate on what that you want.
Uh, Councilmember?
And I just have a comment, um, speaking as a business center. I'm not exactly sure what economic development does for us. I find it kind of ridiculous. I mean, the flower baskets are gorgeous, but it didn't increase my travel getting. Um, and speaking of the music crawl, I I've not seen. A survey or whatever as to what the economic development. Um, how it's impacted me as a business. Um, but I'm sure that's coming up. I'm not saying it's not worthwhile. I'm just saying that. I don't see a direct correlation. And the expenditures and how they affect.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. Um, all right, so we'll move on to our next. Is Agenda Bill twenty four dash sixty one, consideration on change to Duval municipal code. He says two components, but I'm assuming we'll discuss them together because to consider one would not be done considering the other. So I'll just go and hand this over to our city administrator and we'll go from there on these two considerations.
Thank you. So I did not prepare a slide. Um, depth for this because I feel like we've talked a bit about it. Uh, I've gotten email feedbacks from council members. I really appreciate it on what you wanted to see me bring back. To this council meeting. And so the way I structured it um is you have, it's the same agenda bill, but there are two versions. So the first is a full ban. It's ready for you all to vote on. And depending on the vote of the ordinance for the full ban, which would be twenty four sixty one A. I would suggest that you take a vote on that. Um, depending on the outcome of that vote, you have a secondary bill, which is twenty four sixty one B. Um, that bill reflects the Snoke Pauli approach and not the bottle approach. What I think I heard from the last meeting. Was that if you were going to do a partial fireworks, if you want to do a little more. Mostly aligned to Snoke Pauli because the limitations in bottle would have made the ability for the civic club. To sell very few fireworks um at their stand and the Snoke Pauli approach. Um, I think I heard one, one council member that wanted the bottle approach if we were going to consider a partial ban. But overall, I heard as more in favor of the Snoke Pauli approach. So that's what you have in the packet and I think the cadence of it, but it's up to council to decide would be to vote on the full ban. Because that would, depending on what the outcome of that would be, would make voting on a partial ban redundant. But you can stage it however you want. Full ban is twenty four sixty one A. Uh, partial ban is twenty four sixty one B and you have both ordinances. And uh revisions to the code in your council.
And if it's helpful too, we can each take some time to talk about it as well. Um, I I guess for me, I would just say. There was that graphic, um, but I think it's in the last packet. It was that Snoke Pauli. Maybe with the different pictures of the novelty type items like sparklers and all the little smoke bombs. I mean, if there was anything on that graphic that you would be comfortable with at all, then I would say maybe don't vote for the full ban. And we could discuss the specifics of what that would look like. I I'm okay with fountain. I realize not everybody would be. Um. So I think for me, if there's anything on that graphic that you could live with, with families still being able to purchase in Duval and use in their celebrations. I just don't want to see everything get categorized as the same um as like some of the aerial fireworks that are really dangerous all around. And I'll pass it on to whoever wants to go. Councilmember Mercer?
So. You know, obviously we've had, we've had a couple of conversations, you know, I went back and read the survey. Reviewed the comments. We've obviously had speakers today. We had the workshop, which we had relatively little community participation and. Um, you know, I've had some face-to-face discussions. Reflected on what was said at the council at the last, you know, these. Huge comments and and there's actually point of clarification on that before and, you know, I even went back to some history. There's a quote on here by John Adams who's sort of behind it, but. You know, basically talking about the Fourth of July, I have to believe that it will be celebrated by succeeding generations of the great anniversary festival. And then he references, you know, solidized in constant parade, true game, sports guns, bell, wildfires, and illuminated from one end of this. The other, which is kind of, but it's sort of the origination of certain fireworks displays, but. That that said, you know, the chief, I think you indicated that. Having the partial ban actually makes it a little more challenging for not, you know, incrementally, obviously there's not exploding, but there's still. What legal, what's not legal, what we're selling, we're not legal, so we're adding some overhead. But I think for me, one of the 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 sort of more compelling points was looking at some of the consumer safety. I just wanted to throw out a couple of of statistics, you know, thirty two percent of accidents in fireworks. Are between the ages of zero and fourteen, so they're not happening with adults. They're from, you know, youth, which a lot of these novelty. Uh, products sort of fall under. Um, fourteen percent of the incidents are specific to novelties and sparklers. And twenty five percent of the ER visits are specifically in sparklers, which burned over two thousand degrees. So there's both a. Safety component in terms of we're concerned about driving fire, but also just personal safety. And, you know, in in that respect, I'm actually um leaning toward the the full ban. I think the other piece that came up or that was discussed here with the roster of the civic club and I'm, you know, what I haven't seen out is the economic numbers. But if you take away the exploding, the candles and the. The the fountains, the those are the high dollar fountains, the tans, the snakes, the sparklers, they're very low, you know. Cost, it cost a good worth of the revenue component. So some of the things that they would be funding, I think my expectation is there'd be a significant drop in revenue. Without those higher priced items. So. Even the ROI in terms of having the sales for me is sort of more questionable, but. I'm sort of in more of favor of the full ban. I think the only thing that I share for the city administrator that's sort of top of mind for me. Being a member of Sons of the American Revolution and other groups is that we're coming up on the. Semi-Fest Centennial on the twenty twenty six, it's the two hundred and fiftyth anniversary of country. I'd actually be in favor of a full ban, but actually not having implementation happen. So a lot of that's the twenty twenty six. So we actually extend the period of notice, but then actually go to a full ban. So that's sort of my perspective. I would be okay with a partial ban. I just think it adds a level of complexity without a lot of. From on investment, other than obviously it is. Allowing some level of family traditions to to remain in the community, but that's sort of where I'm coming with the property piece.
Councilmember Seppel?
Yeah, um, Councilmember Mercer brings up a lot of good points. Um. So I I uh, I kind of like. Councilmember Mercer sounds me back and forth, but then overall, I think. I think the overall ban is probably the best route to go. I don't, I don't see um. See a partial ban really working because this is going to be too much confusion as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. We already see that right now with illegal fireworks being set off in Duval. And and it's a big job for the police department to go around and um and. I don't always, the courts command, I have to, you know, someone's sending this up and that off. You have a total ban, then you then you know pretty much for sure what's legal and what's not legal. It'll be the police going out and um arresting somebody or citing somebody for. Snakes in their driveway, something like that. There's going to be all that, but I don't, you know, you know. I I so my my thing, my position would be to um.
Um, city administrator? Um, uh, city attorney Gray. So would it be possible to? Uh, we left the implementation day in the draft ordinance. Open. It has to be a minimum of a year, but could it be longer if council were to vote tonight? And choose a implementation day of July fifth, twenty twenty five. Oh, yeah, twenty twenty six. My. My belief is that would be permissible under the statute, because it would cede the statutory requirement under the RCW. Is that consistent with your understanding?
That is consistent with my understanding and I am going to jump to the statute right now just to make a hundred percent sure. But I believe that it's a minimum of one year notice prior to implementation. And I believe the council would have the ability to um set a longer period than that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, we have three council members who haven't spoken yet, so Councilmember Kiffel?
I appreciate counsel. Uh, remarks as well as Mr. Self's remarks and um. I really wouldn't have a problem with um the ban going into effect um July. Or twenty twenty six, because I'm under the impression that the city would be having a public. A city sponsored fireworks display. That would take place on July fourth, that's just. Siskutah, whatever it is. Which I think would be a great way. To celebrate it, you know.
City administrator? I think the proposed amendment or the proposed modification, if I understand it, would actually be to the full ban to go into effect in twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, correct, correct. So we would allow, we would allow twenty twenty six. We would still allow full fireworks that post that date. So we would essentially this extended until past the two hundred and fifty.
I am rushing them. She knew that.
Right, but I think the city, you were talking about the cities, which you added as a proposed modification, but it's not in the budget.
Well, not in the world.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what you had said. We haven't agreed for the city to postpone, but I think that's something.
That council member developed, so um. It it, so I understand your position, just as uh city attorney Ray and I are thinking about what that would look like drafting. Is your position that you would be okay banning it on July fourth, twenty twenty six so long as there was? A city display or are you? Kind of echoing with Councilmember Mercer and Seppel commenting on that you could wait one more year to make sure that we commemorate. The two hundred and fiftieth with personal use of fireworks.
No, we even need to propose, someone would need to propose.
I mean, if we're. We're talking about banning, I think for the people who want it banned and having it go in another year. They've they've already been waiting a long time. I have to wait another. Two years.
Well, I I would support a full ban on fireworks for, you know, all the reasons that we previously discussed. Uh, safety obviously is is a big one. Uh, the uh ability to the police department to actually uh enforce this is is a big uh, big deal in my mind. Uh, mental health, mental health, I you know, I I think we need to consider the mental health of uh our our residents. Uh, and along with that, the mental health of our pets and the mental health of our wildlife. Here in Duval, they, you know, many of those uh get completely freaked out. They don't understand what's going on. Uh, they they panic. It takes a toll, uh takes a toll on our wildlife. We can't even uh imagine. For uh all good reasons, I would support a full ban starting as soon as we can, which would be July. Twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I, this is the real struggle for me. Um, Fourth of July, right, start in December, start three on. And this seems to be the exact opposite of what we're doing here. Um. There are so many things we do in life that aren't perfectly safe and people can make their own personal choices. And um, I I think that there was a really uh an excellent presentation um. From one of our guests here about. Uh, mitigating some of the um. The risks with and the impact wildlife and the impact to pets and those with mental health concerns. Um, that are triggered by the loud noises. The smaller ground only fireworks, they aren't going to be making dang booms. Um, they aren't going up into the sky. Um, you wouldn't have delivering the much reduced safety issues. Um, I really do consider it a win-win um. To do the partial ban. Personally, any savings we would have on police if we are going to swap for a public display. I I mean, the cost of a public's display is. Many, many, many magnitudes more expensive than uh an officer or two doing overtime on Fourth of July. And I and I honestly don't think we will have less. Um, police response needed. If we do a full ban, I think people will be doing it and the community will know that it is no longer allowed. And it will be even more because now people will be very unhappy because it's illegal. And they will get a lot more calls because people will still be putting off. And they will be coming from reservations or other places. That are, you know, likely less than options. So I, obviously it seems to be that I'm in the minority here and. That's just the way it goes sometimes, but I am absolutely not in favor of a full ban. I think it will be very disappointing to. A huge portion of those who are in Duval and I know there's people who want a ban that have been waiting for it and it would be disappointing for them, but. Um, there are a lot of people that it's all very, very. Doing a full ban. So I guess that's all I have to say. Um.
I'm gonna go one more background if everyone would like, because I have some notes. I should have written notes to begin with and I just went off the top of my. Well, like the kind of night it is tonight and all that, right? There's a lot going. Um, so um, again, like one thing that brings me some discomfort is knowing that people will likely still do snakes. And sparklers in their driveway and being like, oh, we're not going to probably enforce it. So if it's even, again, if there's anything on that sheet that you'd be okay with or a turn of line I do. Then I would rather not make it illegal is my point. Um. So if it's the idea that people will probably still kind of do these little things that don't make noise in their driveway, then I know it would seem ridiculous. Um, even to have a modified ban to allow snakes or something like that. I I do get that, but for me, it's just the principle of. If we're kind of okay with it, then don't make it fully illegal and make it very restricted. Um. So I think we have a pretty long history in our city of doing education versus enforcement with um the Fourth of July. I used to trouble with, I totally get a modified ban would be hard to enforce, but I also think. Fully illegal, we'll probably get more fire in them off and run. So um, I I I don't know, it's hard, it's impossible to predict. And and I don't think there's a perfect solution here. I'm glad we're all split on it because I, that's been very clear in our community. The community is very split on it too, so I want to make that clear that. Um, I'm not losing sleep over this, no matter which way it goes tonight. Like, I'm happy to have healthy debate and division here. I I think that really represents the community. I just think it's hard with, um. You know, it's not just the reservations Monroe just to our north. I mean, it's still legal to buy and sell there. So um, that's just where I'm at, where even if it was the smallest things like, let's allow sparklers and snakes. So, um, that's just where I'm at, where even if it was the smallest things like let's allow sparklers and snakes and a few small. Things, it's not gonna make everybody happy, but if we're kind of okay turning a blind eye, well, people will do it anyways and we're not gonna enforce it. Then I, I would say, what's the point of fully banning it? Um, it seems kind of to not fully add substance if we're not willing to really enforce it, you know, and find those five-year-olds. Hopefully not five-year-olds. But um, anyways, I'll turn it over if anyone else, let me know if you have further comments. Those are just my random things I forgot to say the first time around, so. Um, council member Schaefer.
Yeah, yeah, one more thing, and uh, Cynthia, please help me divide, divide if not correct, but uh. The, the uh, Cynthia came to an excellent job of doing various surveys, various locations, various means. And uh, the outcome of that, I believe, it was close. I, I certainly, there was no overwhelming majority one way or another. But I believe the outcome of that is the majority of people uh, supported a, a ban on fireworks. Uh, we do represent the uh, the, the people here in Duval. And certainly that's not an absolute vote one way or another, but it's a strong indication. Of where the people of Duval uh, stand right now. And uh, our uh, you know, job as uh, as a city capital, we listen closely uh, to that. That's another reason I support an applied ban.
Although council member Naplin and then Supple with a quick pause to check in if there's a response from city administrator.
Yeah, I'm gonna say with a whole lot of. We, you know, this isn't a referendum, so um, yes, I spend the summer doing community outreach. You know, try to get out as much and as often as possible to different places. Um, you know, it's, it's a temperature check versus a statistically valid. You know, referendum, for instance, which is very costly to do. Um, of the temperature check that we took from the community, I would say it's about fifty-five, forty-five. Um, so in the, uh, with the majority wanting to ban it. Again, of the people that I heard from who engage in these activities that we plan, so um.
Council member Naplin and then Supple.
Yeah, I have a, a comment, um, number one, I don't. Believe the survey asked about a partial ban, and so it would either fully ban, fully leave it out. That was the impression I think that people would have had by the survey, and so. Um, obviously, we're not voting on leaving it the same, we're, we're voting on a very restricted. Version of allowing fireworks, nothing flying up in the air, big booms, it, it's a significant change. And I, and I think that if um, that had been put to the public, I believe that we would have had to agree with. In the second week, it wasn't a scientifically valid survey, it's whoever's sitting on. This city of Duval Facebook page, or happened to be a discussion board comment, a post about it. I know most of my um, friends with kids and with the family driving to back and forth to sporting events, this and that, they are not. Following the city website and they are not following the discussion board, they're not sitting on there. Commenting on those, uh, they're busy, they're raising their kids, they're also the people who are very much enjoying fireworks, so. I personally, even though I'm very grateful and it was valuable feedback to hear from the community and I appreciate everyone who participated. I don't know if. I feel comfortable um, describing those results as um, the community weighing around this information. And that it wouldn't necessarily be a, a full sampling of the people who are going to. Just based on who happened to see the survey, um. Anyway, so that's my feeling about that.
Council member Supple.
Um, yeah, I'd be in favor of amending the full ban to extend the, to put off the implementation date. Of what's in November of, I'm twenty twenty-six. Extend it, extend one year, two years after, after the bill's been approved.
Yeah.
Eight twenty, yeah, yeah.
Whether the date would be to cover the twenty twenty-six, two hundred and fiftieth celebration. Because I didn't remember when it was the two hundred.
Um, city administrator and then I'll mention other uh, council members.
So, um, sensing that council might feel to. Do something, right? I think your process would be to have a motion to approve. Or a, a motion to approve twenty-four C one A, and then entertain amendments to that. Um, take a vote, finish that vote, and then go on to the partial ban would be a way of proceeding from here after two rounds of discussion.
Great, so council member Mercer and then we'll check in if we vote.
Yeah, so I, I mean, again, I, I want to acknowledge particularly around sort of tradition. Uh, uh, I think where I'm, I continue to struggle even sort of back to the second round is. The, the things that we're considering as part of the partial bans, smoke bombs, smoke bombs. Uh, sparklers, sparklers are the only ones that I would actually really even say. Approach what I consider a firework. The others, they're not really fireworks, they don't, they don't make sounds, they don't emit sparks, they're on the ground, they're. And even a snake, it's very short. Kids, well, I think little kids like them, but they're like really small, like they run and, and when they stop, they quickly. That was I have anything with, because I think they all come to hazards that the others do and then you gotta define height of the bathroom and. It's a lot more parameters. Um, my concern though, that continuing offering them help and helping to stand in town was beyond just. You know, questioning a little bit the, the relevant string. Uh, is it creates a permission factor. So we have a stand in town, we're actually selling, it's branded fireworks. And then it kind of gives permission for people to go and get the other stuff, you know, versus, versus, you know, clearly because I think. The comment was made, you know, people don't go to the website, people don't. It's, it's, it's an easier method to communicate that they're sort of new part of it. That said, um, you know, it sounds like there's also a little bit of. Um, you know, doing it now versus the other, again, mine is more of knowledge that we've got a big, once again, that coming up, we're talking about. Essentially a tough political cycle, um, it's something to bring people together, we'd like to have all a wrath of all circumstances and then. Again, giving the civic love and others an opportunity to, to continue to, to maximize that and, and adapt. By addition, such replacement rather than for this thing that provides another six-month window beyond the mission call, so. Uh, so again, just not a lot new there, but that, that's, I just wanted to clarify a little bit on the sound is. I think if you have something in hand, it's branded fireworks, it does create environment where, oh, you know, I thought fireworks go out. Oh, I know, we saw them sold in safer, I didn't get them, but I, I thought fireworks. It just creates more, um, and then again, you know. Then the police department has to decide whether to enforce, maybe a pass or a warning, or it's just a, a lot more complexity. Um, I think, you know, a vehicle app needs it, and I didn't have an opportunity to do city outreach, but. I think some of the feedback even we got where they are, the question begins, the feedback we're getting is anecdotal, you know, announcing a. Here's the police reports before and after, you know, we saw from data that showed, oh, yeah, there was, it did go down, but I'm kind of relying on.
Um, council member Kiffel, I want to check in with you if you have any other comments. Um. And that might be in other meetings, but. I'm going to figure the whole. I just have one clarifying question, are pockets fireworks because they don't require their issue? Yeah, they are.
I mean, but I think there's likely actually the two things.
I, I just wanted to be really clear on what, you know. Again, there was mention of like, well, it'd be fine if people will probably still do those little things in their driveway, and I'm saying, but. Um, I want to be super clear on the messaging to the community on what a full ban is. First is something that's modified, or a modification of a modification. You know, like no sale, but oh, you could get, I mean, I know that's super confusing, but um, because I get your concern, council member Mercer, about. What you said makes perfect sense to me and I understand that, but um. I just want to be very clear on when people are caught with these little tiny things in the driveway. That we're not gonna be citing a ten-year-old throwing pockets, because there's different levels of them too, there's the really loud ones. But that, that was kind of my last comments, um, okay.
One of this answers a good question about. The primary role that law enforcement has when it comes to the Fourth of July truly is to look for those that are aggressively, you know, this. Uh, those that gain general risk for fire hazard or safety risk. Um, when there's several, there's a change in law, a change in departments. Primary role is education, to make sure people are taken about changes and go through that process. We would not be arresting anybody. It does include some education towards the parents, guardians, we go through that. Um, uh, Duval Police Department will enforce whatever request you choose to, to go through, you know, through the offices this far. Our law may follow or change that, but um, I just want to reassure you that.
I assume it's not. So with that, we've gone through um, two rounds. I do want to be thoughtful and somewhat slow with this, because I recognize there might be um, amendments, so um. I guess I open it up to council if there is one of those that you want to move on, because we don't necessarily have to move. Hold on, both of us, we could just let the other one die, correct?
Yeah, I expect her day as A and B, but it would just my, kind of. The way my brain works logically is that if you voted on the full ban first, that would tell you whether or not you need to move to the front. But you did it before.
Well, I just meant we didn't have to vote on it at first, on the list, you know, but.
Oh, yeah, no, it did suck.
Um, council member Schaefer.
So, so if we uh. Uh, we go ahead and vote on the uh, uh, A, uh. When will we make a motion to delay that till implementation?
It would need to be moved and seconded, and then I'll pause, and then somebody can move to amend it. And there needs to be a second on the amendment, and then we would vote, discuss, or whatever, vote on the amendment.
Gotcha.
Regardless of how that goes, and then you vote on the overall issue. It's, it's only one amendment, if there's more than one amendment, then that gets even more fun, but.
So, so with that in mind, I'll move to approve the judge bill A B twenty-four sixty-one A. Uh, full ban on personal use of fireworks.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, I'll pause, because I believe there might be a motion to amend.
Yeah, I'm going to propose a, a motion to amend to extend implementation till July fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the original motion to. The, move the implementation date to July the, the twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion on that, council member Naplin?
I just wanted to say I'm gonna vote yes on this, not because I am in favor of the full ban, but if. This group is in favor of the full ban, I would rather have the implementation date be there, so. I just want to make the, my. That's why I would even be that.
The, the beauty of Robert's rules and how that works is you can uh, vote to get something closer to a point, you can live with it, even if you say no on the overall. Motion, so, okay, so with any other question or discussion on the amendment on the emotion? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend the original motion to delay the start date until July the, the twenty twenty-six. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, that motion passes, so now to the original motion as amended. Any other discussion or comments on the overall amended motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Do you want a roll call vote, or?
If you would like to.
I do, that'd be pretty clear. Um, all opposed, please say no, no. And the motion, I was a no as well, on the overall, yes on amendment, no on motion.
Thank you.
No, it's a little bit in favor to oppose the overall motion, yeah, so with that, the motion passes. And then I believe unless somebody moves, it wouldn't make sense, but there is another agenda bill, but we can just let it die and not. Bring it up, unless somebody wants to move on that, that would, that would be really confusing. Uh, council member Schaefer, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, or maybe a statement, the, the only thing we could, uh, consider, uh, the particle ban would be for next. Sorry, not, not twenty twenty-five, July fourth, twenty twenty-six. So, right now, if we let this die, we're not banning, uh, you know, anything other than what is already banned. And if we pass this, I believe, we would be supporting a particle ban. For July fourth, twenty twenty-six.
Well, did you want to make a motion?
Uh, I will, uh, I, I'm. With, with, with that, if you start on, do we need to make an amendment?
It would be a separate ordinance. It would be a separate ordinance to have a partial ban. And city attorney, I, I'm hoping you're listening carefully, uh. So, partial ban that was implemented following approval tonight. Would go into effect for July fourth, twenty twenty-six. And twenty-four sixty-one A would go into effect for twenty twenty-six. As approved, amended and approved.
Well, as amended, um, the total ban just got approved to go into effect on July fifth, twenty twenty-six. So, that's when it would go, that's when the full ban goes into effect, and now the question is, can you do a partial ban? Um, to basically cover the Fourth of July in twenty twenty-six, which. I think is an option that the council can consider.
Would you, a clarifying question, would you have to amend it to, I, I'm trying to read it really fast. And would you need to amend it to be clear that it's only intended for that Fourth of July? Or the other one, as soon as it was implemented, would then override and null the other, is that correct?
I think, um, because we're talking about amending the code. Um, then the full ban will override the partial ban, um, um, but. I would, out of an abundance of caution, if the council wants to consider the partial ban for twenty twenty-six, I would suggest, um. Um, amending it to, um, to sunset on uh, July fifth, twenty twenty-six. So that we have a hundred percent clarity over which ordinances affect at what point in time.
That is really helpful, um, council member Mercer.
And this is, probably can wait for the discussion, but the only other thing I wanted to sort of put out here is there's nothing that we passed tonight. Percludes the emergency ordinance that we have out here, so fire departments are bad, uh, you know, we wouldn't have fireworks anymore, I just. I'm a little concerned about this, it's starting to get confusing, depending on that. Why would they discuss that and discuss?
That's even strange, so both provisions, whether you chose twenty-four A or B. Retained the emergency fire chief mechanism for banning anything. Based on fire, so the, neither revision changed that new language that was just adopted.
That's what I, just.
And I'm sorry, I lost track of where we are, did you make a motion on this yet?
No.
Oh, no.
I will.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a vote and then, uh. I think we need to add an amendment to that, to sunset, okay, so all, right now, just, I move to uh, approve, uh. Bill twenty-four sixty-one B, particle ban on personal use of fireworks.
Is there a second? One second, okay, it's been moved and seconded for the partial ban. And I'm gonna pause here if there is amendments or discussion. Uh, council member Naplin?
So, I just wanted to clarify something, I may be in the wrong version about put in here, but um. The administrator right now, we mentioned that what was intended to be in here was. Modeled after simple me, so not what had been presented for. But there's a pony version, which wouldn't allow fountains, things like that, so what is in the packet under the V. Still limits it to only sparklers and tanks.
I don't think that's true.
I thought it was the sale. Provision not for the, the, the back, I thought one had said open one.
If you novelty or trick fireworks.
Yeah, the July, I, based on city attorneys. Um. Uh, recognition. We. Um, took out a second paragraph in, oh, thank you. Under five, ten, fifty five. It, um, I'm gonna just walk right up. So go down further.
Oh, I see, sorry. Yeah, I guess the.
Well, ordinance is not the. Not the green line.
Yeah, so, yeah, the wrong, yeah, I don't know how this ended up here, so what was intended. Was um. That whole section for further clarification. Um, that all is supposed to be out. Um, I don't know why this version made it into the packet. So, the way this is supposed to be written is under five, ten, oh, fifty five. Um, sparklers, tanks, and all of that section was meant to be deleted. And then it would reflect. Some problems. Yeah.
Which includes fountains.
It includes fountains.
Low.
The paragraph reported thrives around.
So then clarifying question on this. That is just for our information, was that actually attached? Like, would we need to amend anything for the way this is written?
The ordinance is written fine, it was only. And the code to delete the. The iteration that had sparklers, tanks. Which was the bottle.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table, and we're paused for discussion or amendments. Uh, Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, let's see, if there's any discussion, why don't we do that first, I was gonna. Put forward amendment to sunset for the.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, Councilmember Naflin?
I just, I, I would want to forward an amendment to remove that section to get reflected, but wasn't it? Okay, so I move to remove. And I can help with that, so what it would be is. The amendment would be to remove, which is what I drafted in the first, I, it was probably me. It's like, I have like five revisions sitting on my desktop.
While you're looking at that, I just want to check you on Councilmember Mercer really quick, did you have a discussion or?
Well, yeah, it was rounds of fountains, because I have issues with the fountains, because fountains, because we don't have descriptive language in terms of fountains. But I'm looking at ads for firework from six inches to twenty feet high. A twenty foot fountain can maybe get the fire. And so, you know, that's the whole, the definition of ground firework is it's sitting on the ground and doesn't take off in the ground. But a twenty foot fountain, you might as well shoot a rocket. You know, twenty feet, if if the concern is they're on. Um, grass, meaning dry grass picking a fire or or combustible thing, or spark, they also put out sparks. Um, I, it may be an issue, because I'm. Not in favor of this intermediate step, I think we.
Yeah.
We've already made a decision that there was a few whole thing, let's give it a few years, or a day, six months, and then. Do it then, but, but uh, but that I do have a concern, because there. I think if we're gonna have fountains, there should be language defined with that.
Well, one quick problem solved, and then I'll go to um, supplemental, but I, you could amend to add. Without being an expert on fireworks or anything like that, I do know that they know about how high they go, so like, if you had a comfortable height. And you could implement fountains not to exceed such and such, and that might just cut out certain ones perhaps, but I I'm not an expert on that, there's just one random. Councilmember supplemental?
Yeah, I would not be in favor of a partial ban for one, whether it be one year.
One year.
Yeah, I think that's just gonna be.
For twenty six.
There are a lot of people, it's confusing to me, um. I don't know what you're planning on when you're getting out of banning or getting a particle ban from one year, I don't know what that implies. It's something, now I've got to make two adjustments for. Twice for the particle ban, then figure out what they're gonna sell in full bench. And so I don't, I don't see what it's.
Um, City Administrator?
So, i- if council proceeds, the amendment that you would want to make to five, ten, oh, fifty five. Would be to remove the version that's in the council packet that begins with for further clarification. And ends with. Uh, for novelty smoke devices. And then to. And that would be it, that that would then reflect the smoke economy, is to remove that section of the version that's.
Um, so with that, you have a motion and a second on the original. Uh, ordinance that was made for. Uh, for the modified ban, and I know Councilmember Schaefer would like to propose an amendment.
Uh. Yeah, should, should we vote on?
Make a vote on mine, then.
Yeah, I'm gonna first, I'm gonna first. Yeah, instead of.
Saying like, as an example, okay, sorry, did you finish your motion? I thought you were waiting for the verbiage from our city minister, I thought I said. I don't think it did, I thought you were just giving an example of what you were gonna say, I didn't know.
Yeah, I always heard of that.
Okay. I, it doesn't matter to me, I don't think there's a. Right way to do it, because we can vote on. One, and it either is adopted within or or not, so whoever wants to start, if you. Yeah, I feel bad if you made one, I didn't realize you did, so you.
Maybe I didn't.
Now that you have the, the language, because you were gonna amend the thing she just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to let Councilmember Naflin make her motion first?
Okay, I make a motion to amend section five, point ten, point fifty five. To remove the section that begins with for further clarification and I think ends right. About where it says novelty smoke device, yeah, some part force, not just, okay, I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded. Oh, sorry.
I can't prove that last.
Thank you for waiting.
That's been moved and seconded um, to remove in five dot ten dot oh five five. The section that starts with for further clarification and ends with for novelty smoke devices. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, that motion passes on that amendment, so that will be removed if the overall motion passes. So I'll pause again, because I think there's, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I have another, uh, amendment, and that would be to uh. Put a sunset clause in for maybe twenty four sixty one B, where it would uh, sunset on July fifth. Twenty twenty six.
Is there a second? One second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded on the overall amended motion, who amend further to end it on July fifth of twenty twenty six. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, that motion, that amendment passes as well. So I'll pause one more time, if there are any other discussion or uh, any other amendments. You can.
Why are we putting a partial ban in one year, now you want to do the full ban the next year, it just doesn't make sense.
Oh, Councilmember Naflin, I'm not in favor of it. I think you want to make that with my, that's an incident.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick, because that's the way that we're going to be. Pass the particle ban and have it sunset in front of us.
Oh, excellent, no, okay, yeah, I did.
You know, I, you know, I've been. I'm, I'm just.
Okay. We'll need to move to extend the meeting, we can't do that while we have an open motion on the table, so as soon as we're done with it, then somebody needs to move to extend the meeting. Um, okay, so. We have two amendments that have been adopted with the overall motion, is there anything else? We've heard a little more discussion, anything else before we go on the overall motion, and to be super clear about it. If this does not pass, then it just means that nothing changes until that date on the first thing we pass, which would be. It really wouldn't be until July of twenty twenty seven. Because.
It would go into effect July fifth, twenty twenty six, but. It, it impacts Fourth of July.
We love you.
No, we don't, we don't. We don't. So if we vote yes on this, then this would go into effect. July fourth, twenty twenty six only. And then, so just to be super clear, in case there's anything, because I feel like it's confusing, okay. So, the motion on the table as amended, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion, overall motion does not pass, do we have a motion to extend the meeting? Yeah. But yeah, all those in favor to extend the meeting past nine thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please say no. That motion passes, and we're in the green again, and so. I think we're done on the fireworks stuff.
Yeah.
All of that aside, and my personal feelings and opinions, but I just had to nerd out for a moment, that that was really fun to go through all of them, and that's important. So, I appreciate that um, exercise in Robert's rules. Um, okay, so with that, we will move on, we still have two things, because we pulled one from the consent agenda. So the last existing business we have is Agenda Bill twenty four dash sixty two. Which is approval of the Association of Washington Cities and the City of Louisville's legislative agenda, I'll give that to our City Administrator.
Thank you, so I think the first thing um, is to. Uh, decide on whether or not um, and uh, for you all to know. On whether or not to accept and adopt the AWC twenty twenty five city legislative priorities. It was in your last meeting, uh, in the pack tonight, so that would be the first order of business. And then the second order of business is in your packet, I developed a draft twenty twenty five. City of Louisville legislative priorities document, um, picking up on the discussion from the last meeting, and things that council said you liked. Including pictures, um, so there were pictures, so. I drove around town and took pictures, um, and then thank you to all the council members who sent in your legislative priorities, I got a majority. And so what I did was I took all of the documents that I received in emails and tried to fit them into categories, so what you see here is um. The work of council to um. Uh, decide what your twenty twenty five legislative priorities are, I think I captured almost everything that you all wrote in one way or another. And then, uh, just so you all know, I did find a small typo at the bottom of the city legislative agenda, there's a common sort of period in the um. Uh, web. Web page, so I'll correct that.
Questions, comments? My, Councilmember Schaefer, and thanks for that.
Uh, well, just, just a comment, a- again, uh, I think uh. Uh, it's been an amazing, excellent job of collecting uh, comments from council and categorizing them. And uh, Catherine, uh, and maybe there are people all uh, legislative agendas, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Goodbell?
And I agree, I think it looks great, I like the layout, like. You guys do a lot, good work on that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Other questions or comments? I feel like it's a little different than other ones I've seen, that it catches my eye, I've seen the same version over the years, it hasn't changed at all, there's a lot of words. And I feel like, you know, the pictures catch your eye, and then you read the word, but it's very readable, and I I know how many sheets of paper, I know most of them are digital now that. Legislators get, and it's just, it's a nice change of pace, and I think it really captures what we need to get across. All right. Any other questions or comments? Or if somebody wants to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to approve General twenty four sixty two, approval of the Association of the Washington Cities and City of Louisville's legislative agendas.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. And motion passes, so with that, we go to our one item in your business, which is eighty twenty four dash fifty seven, the Judd Park Playground sun shade item.
Good evening, council, from what path, from what citizens, uh. On consent and was removed to the one that they swapped this issue and. We have further elected.
Okay, Councilmember Naflin?
Yeah, um, on that agenda bill, it's spoken about using money from other things that we. And one of them is the wall extension, if you're a park, and I shouldn't stand in the parade. Support things, and so I'm wondering. Um, we have, are we doing that anywhere, or, yeah?
So the, well, the, so it is. And could just be on our more bottom line for this second thing, for more weeks. So right now, it's not necessarily a considerable, I'm talking to you all, I mean, any further than that, so. It's budgeted, you'd expect to be needed, um. At this time, and in the conception work. I don't recall what the original model was, but the window and matching is occurring, and I'm glad it's private, uh. Picking out those, it's not the little, little layer video, by whatever you're allowed to. But I've seen you now, we're the middle, we can install it this year, so upside down, um, those other projects, pretty, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, or somebody would like to make a motion? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, come, so uh, I fight by just part, uh, or walk by, uh, every day, sometimes multiple times a day. Uh, my uh. Official uh, opinion is it is probably the heavily, heavily used part in the city by by younger kids. Uh, it's very, very well uh, utilized, and uh. Uh, I, you know, you go by there, you see multiple kids and parents, of course, uh, playing is very well used. So continue to invest in Judd Park is uh, well, in my.
Thank you. Anything else? Or if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, I got Agenda Bill twenty four fifty seven, Judd Park Playground from Judd, which is.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, that is our last item, so we will start our objective, adjourn. Add it to the forty.